Thank you so much TJ. Good morning Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Douglas County. Please welcome, I would like to welcome you and also please join us. Douglas County Board of Commissioners Monday, February 15, 2021 work session. I would like to call roll call before we start and I'll start with District One Commissioner Henry, Henry Mitchell III, are you here if you could just acknowledge your presence?
Present.
District Two Commissioner and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Tarynio Carthon.
Present.
And District Four Commissioner Anne Jones Gaiter will not be with us this morning due to an emergency family matter. And then Chairman Ramona Jackson Jones, present. So we have a quorum this morning Board of Commissioners. Before I start this morning Board of Commissioners, I would like to take the time to welcome, welcome one of our new leaders here in the county and he's our chief appraiser. And I'm not sure if he's on the line with us this morning, but I would just like to acknowledge his presence and also that he has joined the team here in Douglas County in this administration. Our new chief tax appraiser is Mr. Steve Balfour. Mr. Balfour, on behalf of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and myself would like to welcome you and we look forward to working with you. Is Mr. Balfour, are you on the line this morning? Well, he's not with us, but I do still want to acknowledge his presence here in Douglas County. And then just also introduce Mr. Balfour to the citizens of Douglas County. With that being said, Clerk, I'm going to move on to the next item, which is the public comment. Do we have public comment this morning?
Chairman, we did not have anyone sign in for public comment. However, I would like to ask if there's any public on the call right now, if they would like to speak. Okay, I guess there's no one here this morning Chairman, so if you would like to go ahead and move on.
Okay, thank you so much Clerk Watson, appreciate you. We're going to move on, we have presentations this morning. And I want to start with our cost reduction assessment update. Mr. Dada has notified me that he has a meeting and need to go first. And I certainly want to give him the privilege of moving on first this morning. Mr. Dada, are you here Sam Dada?
Yes, good morning Chairman, I'm here.
You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you Chairman, thank you all the Commissioners. Good morning to all of you and appreciate accommodating me in the beginning. I think Dawn just presented, I think the presentation there. I think some of you have already seen this and went to the IT committees approved. Now it's coming to the, you know, the Board of Commissioners here. On the, this is related to a cost reduction on wireless telecom and very focused on Sprint wireless. So the next slide please. So what we have completed, we have, I believe, September, October, November, we have taken three months of actual Sprint data and see what can be done. You have 318 lines and in a monthly average, some month more or less, is costing you between $32.71 per line in an average. We, what we do in these areas, there are technology in place that we put between Sprint and the county. And we do the audit and optimize the data usage. And so again, no changes on the carriers, no changes in the service lines. The, our system pings the Sprint three to four days before the billing. And we download all those information, we look into your contracts, we look into all the available contracts available for the state and the county through Sprint and any promotions they have. And then change those based on your usage. And that way you don't pay anything extra. If there is an overage, we actually change that to a new program. So that way you still optimize your cost structure. So we did all the analysis and we're confident that it will save you around, you know, $12 or so on each line after the technology cost. There is a fee for the technology. I think if they charge directly five to six dollars, it will pass through us. But even with that, we're seeing 38% savings. Along with that, the benefit that you will have, there's an audit trail of all the lines. There are reports as well as the general ledger coding will be done one time setup. So currently you get the bill, somebody looks into that, send it to accounting, make the general ledger numbers and then go enter it in the system. It will come in a very summarized level. So hopefully it will also save time of your people just to take that. And you will see before the bill was and what the new bill is. When the new bill comes in and you will be able to see the savings. And that's the program. Generally it takes six to eight weeks to implement. Again, no changes anywhere. We need an IT person's help so that way they can see, you know, where they can see those, you know, the listing of the lines and the bills. So it's pretty much everything online, we'll still provide a monthly report. And so that's the program. Once this is done, our request to the IT committee was let us review your Verizon bill, which is actually even a lot more than 300 lines. And so we wanted to go a little bit at a time, prove the concept and then go from there. And that's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dada. Our Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Mr. Dada regarding the savings?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you Madam Chair. Sam, good morning.
Good morning.
Question for you. So I get it, so that's for three months and so you'll look, you'll keep looking at this for the full year? I realize an annual savings, is that the goal?
Yes, yes.
That's the goal on that part and you've got some other lines that you're looking at via Verizon. You said cost per line, that's the technology part. And you sort of alluded to it regarding process flow and cost per processing of, were you going there? I was trying to get a feel where you're going because there's savings with technology and there's savings with process. What is the scope of your work and will there be some recommendations regarding that?
Sure, so the technology is, yes, yeah. Sorry, sorry. That's okay, that's so, so. Can you hear me?
You're breaking up just a little bit.
Yeah, I'm breaking up, sorry. So the Commissioner, the technology is, it's a proprietary technology that goes between the wireless company and your billing system. And it looks into automatically all the contracts that you have, which we uploaded ahead of time, and also state contracts. And then compared to the usage and adjusted on a month to month basis. So that's the technology and without that, that's not possible manually doing that, all the lines and adjusting after the bills. We do it before the bill comes in. The process side is Commissioner, that the system will also give visibility what's the data has been used. So you can really watch if somebody is, if any line is watching a lot of movies or not, it really triggers all those and that's a good thing. But also on the accounting side, we look into all the 318 lines, depends on the departments and everything. So the accounting helps us during the implementation. What is the general ledger coding for this line? And we hard code these things. And so when the report comes in, it's a summary level that, okay, here are your bill, it's been audited. It is original bill, here are the savings for the bill. And then here are the general ledger coding and the amount. And then accounting can just review it for a few minutes and process it for me.
No, I appreciate it, it just gives insight. I get the technology does the heavy lifting for us. But some of this may be people adjustment and how we do things here. So I just wanted to know how much it was going to provide us by way of data, but you've answered my question. So I'm good for right now, well done, keep going. We appreciate you being here. Now I'm sure I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman. Any other questions from the board and if not, I'm gonna move on. Mr. Dada, thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Thank you for working on our savings here in Douglas County. We definitely want to reduce our costs.
Quick question Chairman, what's the next step? Is it approved so we can talk to the IT for implementation?
Well, this has to go before the full board and I will, let me call you back and we'll let you know, but it needs to go before the full board. This is your presentation today and then we will certainly make a decision.
Fantastic, let me know, thank you.
Okay, thank you Mr. Dada and have a great day. All right, on our next presentation this morning, we have a SLOSS update from Mr. Terry Gable. Mr. Gable, are you here?
Yes, good morning Madam Chair.
Good morning, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, just real quick point of work before he moves. Previous question, so what is it that we were about to do? And not that I was against it, but it sounds like he was making a presentation. What is the ask that we need to sign back off? To call him offline without the full board, I'm just, what was that exchange? I just want to make sure I understood what just happened. What are we approving?
He just wants to know if we want to, if we want to engage in the savings with Sprint. There's opportunity for savings, cost savings. And of course, that is something before I just give the nod, I wanted it to come before the full board. It could be placed on the agenda. It's a cost saving and certainly I want him to go in and quantify that savings for us to give us an idea of what that savings would look like before we pull the trigger. I'm not sure if we have all our constitutional officers on board with this request. So he's still massaging some things, that's why I asked him if he could just hold off.
All right, so this is a preliminary audit, an assessment of here's the potential savings. Give you a quick look and then out of that, I mean, sort of like our energy audit savings, same process. We audited on the front side, they came back with the findings and then we rolled it out. Is that what I'm hearing? I'm not leaving you, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's what you're hearing, yes.
All right, I yield the floor Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want to misunderstand what he was asking. Thank you ma'am, I yield.
You're welcome. All right, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to Terry Gable with our SLOSS presentation this morning and update. You have the floor, Mr. Gable.
Good morning Madam Chair and members of the board. So I'll be reporting on, this is Terry Gable with Atlas and I'll be reporting on the December revenues this month and the work completed through January. With that, let me, and before I start, David Good does have a vendor, a short vendor report that he'll do at the end of my presentation. Let me get it. And please let me know if you have trouble seeing it. Okay, so we'll get started. Again, this is the February SLOSS update report for the revenues in December and work completed through January. The, we invoiced out about a million dollars in January and it's brought our total up to around 57, 55.7 million dollars. So a good month considering we, we're in, we're in the middle of the winter and the difficulties you have with particularly the rainy weather we've been having lately. Most of that money was in transportation and parks. We had very little that was invoiced out in fire. Transportation, just right at $230,000 was invoiced out in transportation and in parks and recreation, we had around $654,000 that was invoiced out. So the program's doing well. Again, things do slow down in the winter, but we still had a pretty good month considering, considering that factor. And then looking at the revenues, our December revenues came in strong at $2.8 million, so that was very good news. As we all been monitoring this very closely with COVID and how it's affecting our economy. But the revenues have, as we've been tracking, has, has stayed strong through year four, which has been, has really been what we needed with, with our overall program and cash flow. So the, you can see the, the $2.8 million for, for the month of December was our highest, actually our highest recorded revenue month. And if you just look at the past 12 months, other than the month we had in August, which was the additional money we had from the state audit. So good news there with our revenue forecast for right now. If you look at the overall program for all four years to date, we're at $98.1 million. And if it was projected out, it's 91.1, which brings us just shy of $7 million that is over projections. So again, the program is very stable and solid. And we look forward to, as we move into, this is the February report. We've got one more month in year four, which will be a milestone for us. We'll be moving into year five as of April 1st. And then within the last two years of the 2016 SLOSS program. Everything right now is on track and with the work compared to the revenues we've been drawing in and the time, no, no changes have been recommended for the, for the program. The bond servicing and payment obligation, as we have been reporting, that smaller payment was made in October. As of April 1st, the larger payment of $16.8 million will be made. These funds are in reserve and we have it ready to make that payment, which is good news. Our last payment will be in year five, much smaller than what we've been, we've been reporting. So it'll be that much quicker we can get to pay go money. And again, that'll be, that'll finish out the bond payment obligation in year five, which is even better news. Okay, real quick for fire, our ambulance, you know, has been, is in, went through procurement and has been ordered, we expecting the chief and deputy chief are expecting this to be delivered in July. We thought might get it a little bit early, but it will be coming in with a proposed date in July as the fire truck. So the new chief will be getting some new equipment coming in almost immediately here, which is good news to get both the ambulance and the fire truck in service and to serve the general public. So good news there with that. And then the only other project we have currently have ongoing right now with, with the chief is Fire Station 11. This project is ready, as I reported last month, we're ready to bid this project out. But we are waiting on, on GDOT to provide us or approve for us the access permit in order to utilize their right of way to run that short section of sewer line. It has been a challenging little process with GDOT. We have several projects in the SLOSS program that's affecting all the, all three departments that were needing permits, but we're diligently trying to work with them and work through the process. But as soon as we get thumbs up from GDOT, we're ready to go. And I can have the, we can have the plans and the bid documents over to Dawn to go ahead and get this project out for, out for bid and I'll keep the board posted on, on the progress of that. The only thing I'll mention in fire, and you will see it on the agenda today, the chief will be going through several items, ticket items that will be coming out of their station renovation funds for year five. This has already been discussed and we've reviewed this and where those, those, those items will be coming from for year five. So that'll, that'll be a good start for him as he moves into the first year of his program. And then moving on to transportation, the resurfacing program, we're still reporting on that for 2020. Still remains one road to complete that's Dundee Court. And the maintenance is doing some rework on, on some of the drainage for that one road. That needs to be done before they, they do the topping on it. Once that's completed, that should finish out everything for 2020. Miguel's reporting that they, they're very close to getting the, the package together and to put out for bid for 2021 resurfacing program. We're looking forward to that and that should be early, late spring, early summer to get that on the street and get the contractor started with that work as we move into year five, the resurfacing program. Stuart Mill Road, as we've been reporting, is, is in the right of way phase. We do have that one parcel, everything is being cleared except for the parcel with the city. Miguel is, is working with them very closely, trying to finalize that. And we, we're also working, Miguel's staff is working with the consultant to get the full four permit. The environmental permit has to be approved, there's plans and everything to go as soon as those two things are called. Of course, we'll, we'll get this project out for bid and hopefully have this, this is one of Miguel's projects that'll be under construction this, this summer. Bright Star Road and John West Road, as we've been reporting, is substantially completed, is in a punchless phase. And then there'll be some more work that will be done to find, to get that project finished up, that it is open, fully open to traffic. As with the Sweetwater Church Road, it is also in the punchless pay phase. And we will, I'll continue to report on these till we get a little closer, getting those completely closed out. And then we'll move them into, into the completed phase of the program. This is a drone shot that TJ done for us. To kind of follow this project out, I have had some shots of it before, but this is a good overview. Our aerial view of that intersection is working very well and it turned out to be a nice looking project for the county and for the citizens. And then moving on, Chapel Hill Road is right square in the middle of the design phase. We have a milestone that we're going to hit here this month. The, the design team is finishing up an updated full concept display that they'll be sending to Miguel for review. They will, once Miguel provides comment and approval back on that, they will move into the preliminary plan phase and be getting that started. And we'll continue on with the design and looking forward to getting right away plans for this project because it will take a few months to get that, get the parcels, the number of parcels acquired for this project. So we're looking forward to that one, continuing to move forward and no issues at this point. Highway five is, is, as I've been reporting, is in the, the design phase. We are getting closer to right of way phase and Miguel and I are looking at several parcels that are going to need to be closed and acquired for, for this right turn lane that has grown a little bit in size, which is going to affect a few more parcels. So we're looking forward to getting those right of way plans from the design team so Miguel can get his staff on, on that and start working on the right of way. Once that's done, we'll be finishing the plans up and getting this, getting this project ready for, to bid out also. Post Road Bridge is continuing under construction with Wright Brothers. I was out there last week, they, they have gotten it out of the ground. As you can see, they were setting the beams when I was out there last week. This is always interesting to stop by and take a look at the, the progress. These are, these beams are about 120 feet long and they're, they're that long to span that creek. So they're making good progress again, everybody's fighting the weather and the rain. They've got to work on the end vents, which will be next. And then they'll be starting for some of the top, top deck on the bridge. But they are making progress and we're looking forward to getting that project completed by, by summer and getting it up in the traffic. Lithia Springs Sidewalk Projects, as I've reported, you know, these are, these are substantially complete. They're just in a punchless phase and Miguel and them were making some last, last few changes in some of the drainage to improve everything before we close these projects out. But same thing with Chestnut Log Sidewalk is substantially complete and it's in a punch, punchless phase. And I'll keep reporting on it until they, till Miguel and them close it out. New Manchester is still, we're still working with GDOT. One of the projects that we, we got to get an access permit from GDOT. If you remember this one, this is, projects had quite the length, lengthy items that have come up as we move through this. A lot of this has been generated by the Hawk signal that we are proposing, that we put on State Route 92, provide more safety for the walking pedestrians out there. The last thing that, that GDOT required was a traffic signal warrant study that Miguel and them have, have completed and submitted. They're just waiting on approval for that, which in, in turn should lead to an approval for the access permit. So we're just, again, we're on hold for, for GDOT. And once we get that final approval back, we are ready to put this project out for bid. Our White Stone Cover is, we're up on top finally and I showed a picture last month of the cover itself. Where they are, it's, they're on, on the road now and you see the curb gutters in, the guardrails in. There should be replacing asphalt soon and doing a lot of finishing touchups on it and closing out the, any of the flat work of the sidewalk that'll need to be improved on it. But looking forward, again, I know that's been a long time coming and getting this road opened back up for the public out there in that, in that, that area and community to be able to get access across that creek. So nearing completion on that, should have it completed by late spring, if not earlier than that. So our, our street light projects are, are moving forward. This is phase one, I-20 ramps. George Power had two, they got I-20 at Post Road. We are still waiting on GDOT there. I keep hitting up Georgia Power and obviously they're, they're at the mercy of GDOT to get that one ramp, the changes that were required had been submitted and get that approved. The I-20 at Liberty Road, George Power's waiting on fixtures to be delivered in order to move forward with that. On Graystone's side, they have completed I-20 at Lee Road and I-20 at State Route 5. As of last week, they were completing Thornton Road and Chapel Hill. So they are nearing completing the work on the I-20 ramp. So that was, I thought that was good news. And then looking at phase two for the roads and the intersections, Georgia Power has completed Highway 78 at Post Road and Highway 78 at John West and that was the only two projects they had with the county that was on the, the, the roads or the intersection. So they, they've completed with that and their primary folks will be working on and getting the ramps done on I-20 at Post Road and John West. Graystone has also made some pretty good progress. They finished up West Stuart Mill Road last week. They were finishing that up with Kirsty Lake Road. And with the exception of State Route 166, the road projects are complete. They're telling me that the 166 is going to take multiple GDOT permits in order, before they can, they can get a final plan and, and move forward with that project. It will probably be towards the end of the overall program. And that is, if you remember, that's one of the larger lighting projects in the batch that we did for the entire county. So some good progress there and I'll continue to, to communicate with them and make sure everything is moving and, and report to the board if they, if we are seeing any issues. Highway 92 at Riverside Parkway, this is one that we've been reporting to the board. That, this is, we're in partnership with GDOT on another quick response project that they take, they take, they took the lead on. I'm glad to report that they've actually started work on this, on this, which was good news. So they'll be out there until that project's completed. The only responsibility the county had in this was to provide the mast post, which was great news in, in our, our part of the project. We can put the, those monies that we had identified for the project and be put towards other SLOSS projects. So good news there, so they're moving forward. I think that worked out, Miguel said it worked out good with the county helping with the poles. It actually was able to accelerate the project and get it, get it under construction sooner. Lee Road, no change there, Miguel's working diligently with GDOT and the Theds and trying to get this project rebid. The, the board approved to reject the bids for the, the previous bid. And now the challenge is getting it back, back out on the street. And hopefully that'll be towards the end of the late spring or early summer. Miguel will be able to get this project back out on the street and get it bid out. So with that, and we'll just keep the board informed in, of that and as we move into the, into the spring. Our last project with transportation is Maxim Road Sidewalk Project. The design is, is mostly complete on this. We're still in the, in the, the right away phase. There were about four parcels, just driveway easements. And not reporting any, any problems with this, it's just a matter of working through the process. But this will be another project that we'll see under construction this summer from Miguel's group, which would be another good sidewalk project to get done for the county. So with, with that, that finishes up the, our update for transportation and I'll quickly touch on the parks program. The, the multipurpose activity center is, they, they've made some progress. Again, it's been challenges with the weather. The aerial view of the shot there was taken back towards the end of January and that, that, that roof is completed now. Everything is dried in the roof. Their goal is to complete everything on the exterior of the building by the end of the month. Have permanent power on. One critical thing, and it's, it's, it relates to the finishing, the interior of the building, is it needs to start, start drying it out for the floor. As you know, the, the gym floors have that nice pretty hardwood. But a critical fact, factor in that is getting the building completely dried out. So about the end of the month, they'll have the, the, the windows will be sealed. They are having some slow to delivery on the glass, the, the frames will be in. If the glass is not there, they'll have it sealed up temporarily with some, with plastic. So it shouldn't, shouldn't affect anything as far as getting the HVAC turned on and, and get this building dried out. So looking forward to that. It's really made a good bit of progress and really starting to take shape and, and, and look good. They are putting the, the final metal roof deck on the building. But that's not really impacting it being dried in. The building is, is, is well dried in with the, the ice and water shield that was put on as an underlayment for the building. But you'll start seeing the, the final roof color go on. Was going, I went by there this morning, you can, you can see some of those pieces starting to go in. So we're looking forward to that and getting it dried in and getting, starting to see some of the, the pretty interior of the building come online. And that's, that's what will be the next big phase of the project. The senior center. The, the main thing that we're, I've been reporting on is the screen in porch. And it has been, just the delivery of that has been delayed with everything going on with, with anything as far as materials. It's, but right now, finally got a date from the contractor, they're expecting delivery February twenty-second. And it'll take a couple of weeks, two, three weeks to get it installed and completed. With that, we'll be working with the contractor with a couple punchless items, but not interfering with the building itself. And it's already, again, it's been turned over to the county, but we, we've still got him under, under our warranty phase and we'll be working with him to get everything that's, some things I'm sure will be found as we, as we move through the year. And we'll get those taken care of with headling. So good news there. And then finally, the, the last who I've been reporting on is Bill Art and Fair Play Concession Buildings. The, the Health Department, I'm waiting, I thought we were going to get this. Last week, it was their design requirements on this, on the tank system and the permit. As soon as we get that, we'll get it into the hands of the contractor. And he can, once he reviews that, he can tell us on what it's going to take to get these tanks in. As you can see, the buildings are really going to be nice, I think they're going to be, it's going to be a big asset for these two parks. And this is Fair Play along with the new lights that we've put in. The only thing remaining, but we've got to get the tanks in is for the contractor can get water on the building. He can start doing some final cleanup and some finishing touches on all the, the trim work and everything in the building and clean everything up. But they're really looking nice and I think, again, it's going to be a nice asset. It just, it has been a, a process with these tanks. But they're, they'll be there and they'll be well, well sized and large enough for, for the, for the parks for years to come. So, and then with that, David, are you online with us?
Yes, I am.
I will, I'll turn it over to David and let him go, quickly go through the vendor report, Madam Chair, and then we'll open it up for questions from the board. David, do you want to go in?
I'm sure. Yes, again, this is David Good, Spots Communications Director. As you see on the screen, we have a hundred and twenty-eight total vendors. Forty-five of them are right here in Douglas County, another forty-two, we also consider local, but they're within thirty miles of Douglas County. The other forty-one are either outside of the thirty miles or outside of state of Georgia. And they're working on eighty-two total projects, thirty-nine of them are active, forty-three are complete. When we say active, that's all the way until everything has actually been paid off. So we might be in use of that project, but if it has not been, if all the checks have not been done, we do not consider those. We consider them active until they're totally completed. On the next screen, we actually have of those quote unquote, local vendors, and that's almost seventy percent of all the vendors. And so we make sure that we reach out to them through every communication effort. Last month, we did doing business through Douglas County and we made sure that we let people know about the SPOLOX program. Next slide. And then the next one that comes up is that you actually see the amount of dollars that have been spent with our local vendors. That's twenty-nine million throughout both sides of the local vendors. And so that represents about fifty-five percent of the SPOLOX funds. So seventy percent of the use and fifty-five percent of those, of those dollar funds. We've completed, we're getting ready to go into, like Terry Gable said, going, we're ending year four and we're getting ready to go into year five. And so we make sure that even though we're in this COVID type of setup, we actually reach out to all of our vendors through any type of virtual events that's going on for anyone who's doing anything in Douglas County. We reach out through our, through virtually, so we make sure we're a part of it. And then the next slide is all about our DBEs. As earlier as I presented, we did have a doing business through Douglas County and we had a couple of DBEs that were there and some actually got their certification as I understand. And right now through all of our projects, seventy-five percent of those projects have DBE representation or minority owned representation. And with that, that's my presentation and both Terry Gable and I will take any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Good, and also thank you so much, Mr. Gable. All the commissioners, do we have any questions for our SPOLOX team this morning? Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of District Two, I'd like to ask Terry Gable a couple of questions. So Terry, you out there?
I am, yes, sir.
All right. So I'll, I'll start, I'll start with transportation. And Miguel, don't worry, you don't have to respond to this, we'll, we'll catch up tomorrow in the Transportation Committee meeting. But, but specifically Terry, it looks like Riverside and ninety-two, the light is coming along. And, and just to back up for a minute, and again, this is what, we're going to our fifth year for this, for the SPOLOX. And to think about, you know, from the time that we laid down the, the bike lanes on Riverside, then we added streetlights. And then we, we also dealt with speed and now we've got this light at the end. I mean, you, you see it shaping up. I know sometimes the citizens, I mean, you have to step back from it. Think how this thing is being shaped. You, you think about, obviously, the light at Mount Vernon, you, you think about the things that we've done on Maxim and, and the construction and obviously the signs that goes toward the airport, I mean, it was shaped, right? And all this was with the SPOLOX dollars. So I appreciate the, the two point eight million dollars that you've acknowledged where half of that is transportation because it, it's making a difference. To hear the, the sidewalks coming in, it, it, I mean, these are things that the citizens have asked for, but to see it manifest. I mean, Madam Chair, we're four years, going five years in, you see the difference. And this, 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 this mechanism that the General Assembly gives us to use SPOLOX as, as a function for funding, not property tax, but for funding major items is so critical. So I had to at least acknowledge that because we couldn't have done this, Madam Chair, without that SPOLOX. And so I appreciate these, these projects that are coming online because the citizens actually get to see them and I get comments constantly, like they, they get to see the manifestation. So I want to at least acknowledge that and I appreciate you guys overseeing this for us because there's no way that our, our staff could have, you know, delivered services and then oversee something as, as big as this. So thank you to Atlas and those guys and the team with HJ Russell and David, all you guys for what you do. All right, two quick questions. Boundary Waters, Community Center, which obviously is something very important. On Boundary Waters, I heard you say we're about to seal it up. So when is the anticipated go line?
The contractor in our last meeting, his goal is to have it sealed up by the end of February. And he's, Commissioner, he's basically there now. But the, the key there is to get, get permanent power on it and get the building, start getting airflow in the building. He's got to do that, it's before he moves forward with anything. So it's a, it's a, it's a lot there at stake and I will have to, but that was a goal and I see no reason why he shouldn't be able to meet that, about the end of February.
End of February is sealed, but okay, so then, once you're inside, as, as they say, and I know Commissioner Mitchell would, would correct me if I missed, missed this. So once I'm inside, then how long does it take to sort of build out the interior and get it to a point where it's goal ready? You know, ball ready? When do you go live? And I know it's all relative, you know, I'm not, never going to box you per se or hold you to a pin, but I'm, I'm trying to set expectations. I got a town hall coming up, so.
The contractor is, his schedule right now is showing completion in May of the building.
Completion in May?
And that would be, we would still be in a punchless phase, but it would be substantially complete by May, yes.
Completion by May, and I, I know perhaps Director Kerry Dukes is out there. I'm, I'm trying to anticipate along with the delivery of this capital project, there's also personnel that goes along with that. So I'll save that for another day. I'm sure the committee of Parks and Rec is on top of that, but you know, I'm trying to synchronize this, right? Because we have funding decisions that we have to make, that's just not only the SPOLOX, but also our fund balance and everything else. So you know, it has to be aligned. So I, I'm good on that, I just, I'm making a point and I think the powers should be hearing. All right, that being said, I'm, I'm fine with that, you, you guys move along. Last question, so I can, for third one is dealing with, all right, what is, what is fire station number eleven?
That project involved, the, the, the main focus of the project was to enlarge that, that, the back parking lot so that the fire trucks to do a three-point turn and come in from the rear. GDOT is in favor of it, I think they, they, they liked the project from the beginning. Would you sit a stalemate here with their utility department? But that was it. It, the septic tank system had to be addressed, I think it was nearing its life. So that came into play in the scope of the project. And then once we got that, a preliminary design for that, we realized we couldn't, there's just not enough room on that parcel to do a full-blown septic tank system and, and put the, 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 the three-point turnaround parking lot in. So that's the goal. We just got to get this worked out with this sewer system and we'll be able to move forward with it.
All right. I thought something else you've answered my question, but I guess where I'm going with this, since we're coming to the end of this, what do we say with the fire station for Thornton Road? I know it's on the list, I mean, I'm sure I can go pick up a report, but I, I want to hear publicly. This is something that was expressed along with the senior center as well as community center is bar, being the verticals that go up. Obviously, you know, four and a half, five billion dollars on Thornton Road, there's a lot of commercial tax dollars that obviously is being paid into that area. There is some exposure, I get Mutual E from Osteo, I, I get Riverside. But I mean, these guys actually, I mean, they, they had expectations. So do we think we're going to get there with this SPOLOX? And I'm looking at the spin here, but you know, I'm, I'm, I'm making sure that there's acknowledgement that says, okay, now, that was on the list. I understand it's a cost, but can you speak to that? Will, will it make it or what, where we at?
Yes, sir, we, it's, it's in the budget and we've got it set up. That'll be something I'll be meeting with a new chief on. We are planning to start the design this year in year five for the building.
That's fine, you, you're fine, I hadn't met the chief yet, we, we're planning to meet, I'm just sending his expectations on what I plan on talking about. So you're, you're good. You're good, Terry, we're, that's me messaging, so no, we're good. Madam Chair, all my questions have been asked, I've only had, you know, I fulfill my three, I get back to the floor, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you have any questions from the board or comments?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm, I'm on and thanks, okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, yes, just, just a couple. Just a great job, I guess, for those who are actually taking part in this SPOLOX runs. And Terry, I guess, the, the people are still showing up even with the mere fact of this pandemic giving us a run for our money. But it looks like the SPOLOX is doing well, correct?
Yes, sir. To, to date, we're very pleasantly surprised, but very, very stable and very solid.
And, and financially, we are good with all the debt from the mere fact of, I know we get into the pay as you go, but the, the payoff our end of the SPOLOX dollars, so are we good on that end?
We are, you know, we've got the, this last large payment in year four is, is in reserve now, we'll make that in April. And then the, the last payment is around four point two million dollars. So we're, it's very small compared to the, the other payments that we've made. So yes, we're, we're good and hopefully finish that up the first half of year five.
Right, so it doesn't, doesn't look like any problems based on the mere fact of how this thing is moving, correct?
No, sir, not at this point.
Okay, and a couple of other questions. Now, during our Parks and Rec Committee meeting, and you didn't make it, Terry, but I know David, I don't know if you want to speak to this. We talked about a roof that we're looking at, trying to make sure that we possibly fit this roof in, even though we got a cost savings that we spoke of at the committee level in reference to some reorganizational structure. David, can you kind of speak to that so the general public can know that we're definitely on top of this roof problem at the Parks and that we're definitely trying to find where it falls in the, in the stack, in the deck when it comes to any dollars and cents that's going in that direction.
Right, right now, I do know that the, at the bottom of the list were the two concession stands, Fair Play and Bill Art. And then right under there was, was Deer League Renovations. And I do know that Terry did look at, you know, where the finances are and he could speak more to that on how much is available for the roof. But the Deer League renovation is next, right under the two concession stands. And I know that we did talk over with Gary and that Gary was going to get with, I guess, with the, you know, the local departments and find out exactly how much it would cost to get to the roof. Gary might be more to that part on who he told to and then Terry can speak more to how much on the financing that we have. Terry?
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner, we should be good. What I have, and I've had it in the, in the budget, was a hundred thousand dollars to go towards that roof. From what I'm hearing now, it's, it's going to be more money. And again, I'll let Gary speak to that, but we, we have a hundred dollars that we're designated to go towards the roof.
Okay, right, not a hundred dollars, because we, we need more than a hundred dollars. But okay, yeah, I, I mean, we, we won't get into the nuts and bolts of it though, but I just want to make sure that the general public know that we're actually looking at that roof and that situation and trying to address it, even in the SPOLOX, that we're, we're doing our due diligence and trying to adjust dollars and cents and try to make sure that we're going in the right direction when it comes to that though. But the good part is, it is in, it, it, it probably will make it on the SPOLOX list even though we've only got a hundred thousand dollars because that's what we estimated to be, you know, years ago. However, I think that costs have kind of changed, you know, almost another hundred thousand dollars or close to it to really get it done right, to do it right. But we'll look at that and we'll get to that cost. The other question I've got, yes, okay, yes, Gary, I didn't know. Okay, sure, go ahead, Gary.
I, I just wanted to give you an update or give the commissioners an update. I met with James Worthington and James has a company that, some way through the state and they go around and give estimates on roofs for counties, cities, whatever. And he is in the process now of getting an update on what that roof will cost and hopefully we'll have something toward it.
Yeah, okay, okay, I didn't even know you was on it. Thank you for speaking up though, Gary, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, and, and let's move right along also to the Senior Citizen Center. Also at the committee level, we had a conversation about the warranty. I'm not sure exactly is there a need for what I call an extended warranty because the COVID situation has caused and put us in a position where we won't use that building to the mid to latter part. Because the COVID situation has caused and, and put us in a position to where we won't use that building to the mid to latter part of this year. So, we run out of our warranty? Or is these guys understanding that the warranty will stay in effect another year, another five years? You know, I was, I was being kind of crazy saying I will hope that it extends to five years. But at the end of the day, I'm more concerned with somebody and these guys all understand that we may be in a unique situation where we haven't used the building outside of, you know, the, the, um, the health department used it to give out shots and a couple of things that having to deal with this COVID situation. But the use of the building may not truly get a true full use for another six months or better. Have we had a conversation with these guys about that situation? And we had this at the committee and Terry, you wasn't there though, so I'm not sure if you're in, in the loop on that.
Um, David has kept me a little bit informed of it and, um, the warranty, the, the contractor's obligation will run out in September. Um, so you're right, it's, it's, it's a valid point. I have not approached the contractor, James, and I can do that. Um, but in, in our only conversations about it, and I'm sure the contractor, if, if there's a warranty extension, the county will, you know, and it may be worth paying some, some funding funds to, to extend the warranty on it. Uh, but the contractor is not, you know, won't, it won't be included in, in the, um, his obligations for the construction of the building and he's got that first year, um, that he's responsible for.
Well, I hope he actually extended through just his craftsmanship, based on the mere fact of nobody's being able to use the building based on this whole pandemic situation. However, if, if there is a cost, I think we need to have that conversation now. And the committee, we've actually, you know, been having that conversation and trying to figure out kind of what that looks like if there is. But I would hope that this contractor and doing good business with Douglas County, that he or she would take a hard look at this and understand the situations are different. Uh, if we had been able to use the building once the keys were transferred to us and the senior was in there, you know, marking up the walls and finding the nail pops and everything else, we'll be okay. But we haven't had access to that. I know I've pushed the envelope with, um, uh, the director, uh, to actually go over there and, and, and use stuff, turn the lights on and off, Ms. Dr. Gilchrist, to kind of do those kind of things, but it's not going to be enough for me to really get our true due diligence when it comes to the warranty of a year or two years. So, hopefully you guys will have a, a good conversation with this.
Yes, sir.
And get them to understand, we're not just asking for this because we just wanted a warranty or an extended warranty. We just want them to do their due diligence and, and stating the mere fact of we understand the situation. So, we're going to just automatically give that. We're going to offer that to you guys, you know, to give you guys a full, if it's a year or two years or whatever that is. Now, if there's a cost in dealing with this, you know, we'll address that. But I hope that's not, I hope that it doesn't become a cost just because.
Yes.
I, I hope these guys are smart about this, you know, and want to do, do good business with Douglas County, so.
Uh, fully understand and I will, I'll communicate with the contractor and get your response back.
Okay, and, and, and we can bring that back and, and definitely, I know the committee had asked this question at our last committee meeting in Parks and Rec. So, if you can bring that back and definitely give us a heads up of what that looks like and then we'll bring it back to the full board of what that really is. So, uh, if you and David can kind of give me that much, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely really, 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 uh, appreciate that. Now, if by chance it turns out to be September is the magical date, then we'll do all we can to, uh, you know, fulfill that date and get Dr. Gilchrist to, to do all she can to go in there and, and, and find those hopefully issues that we may, you know, encounter that we won't know until we fully use the building.
Right.
Okay. David, anything else you want to add to this?
We'll make sure that. Terry said we'll get with the contract and then have a response back to you, hopefully in time for the, uh, next, um, the next committee meeting.
Got it, got it. Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, I yield back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. Any other? And I'm going to move on. Thank you so much, Mr. Gable and Mr. Good for your presentation and, and your, and your amazing body of work. I will get with you offline, uh, Mr. Gable, just to, um, mention those lights, the, the lights that are going up on the I-20. I did have an opportunity to ride the county this weekend and I'm noticing if they could, if they could intensify the lighting a little bit or either use the highest wattage they have, it's a little dim still trying to get on and off. And I know that's the purpose, to allow our citizens to have, uh, lighting as they, uh, enter the, uh, ramps. So, they, if, if they could, just Greystone could just intensify the lighting for me.
Yeah, and let me, let me, I'll, I'll get you some, I'll get you a feat, some feedback on that and get back with you, okay?
Okay, thank you. All right, Board of Commissioners, thank you so much, Mr. Gable and Mr. Good again. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on and we're going to move on to, um, the approval of the minutes tomorrow. Board of Commissioners, please, uh, uh, review your minutes and we will, uh, approve accordingly. And then, if you, also, we will be approving our expenses tomorrow, so please review your expenses and then we will approve accordingly. And then, Board of Commissioners, we do have a proclamation tomorrow and that's tab number four. It's proclaiming the month of February as Black History Month in Douglas County. And that'll be, uh, read by Jordan Griffin. Uh, she is part of the Douglas County Youth Commission, so we're excited about that tomorrow. Uh, I'm going to move on to, uh, tab number five, which is our first business item and is authorization to approve the 2021 equitable sharing agreement and certification for the District Attorney's Office and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Ms. Thompson, how are you doing this morning?
How are y'all?
Very good. You have the floor.
Okay, this is our annual report for the federal asset forfeiture funds. Um, and it is to, um, ask the chairman to authorize and sign all related documents and also to let you know that, um, this office attests that the facts presented in the equitable sharing agreement are true to the best of our knowledge and belief.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Thompson, quite, good, good morning.
Good morning.
Ju- just for the record, I, on this annual, but can, can you explain what the drug forfeiture, what, what this equitable relationship is? Just a little primer. You don't have to go long technically, can you please?
I sure will. Um, we have state and local, um, forfeitures, but this is a multi-agency forfeiture. Um, this is more of a, on a federal level. And when our law enforcement and us, um, all partner together, um, the federal will, if they've seized any money or funds or anything, they will share a portion of it with us. Um, and we do accept it if they send it to us and this is, we reported every year what funds we have received.
I got it. So, I, I know we've got, the sheriff has a, a drug forfeiture and you have one as, uh, meaning representing the District Attorney's Office. So, tho- those two areas, they split up, they split up the pie. I get it. I understand.
Right.
And its uses, um, because I, I do, I know from, from obviously being here long enough that there is a distinction, a difference between what the DA can use it for and what sheriff can use it for. Can you speak to a little bit to what the uses of those funds could be for?
Well, actually, the federal asset funds are a totally different guideline than like the local funds. And we actually have guidelines of permissible and impermissible uses for the federal. And we have to follow that guideline in order to, um, use it. And that's one reason we report annually every year is so they can see what we have spent and it gets qualified in the permissible uses.
Okay, is that, is disclosable, uh, a couple of examples and, and what the current balance is? Or that, that's sort of like secret squirrel type stuff? You can't really say?
I did attach it. I don't, can you? Um, oh, I can tell you. Um, we did, our balance right now is ninety-nine thousand, two eighty-two, thirty-two. Um, we did buy a vehicle last year with it for thirty-three thousand.
All right, so we, but you can buy operational improvements, things of that nature, okay?
Yes.
I, I, I got it. I just, but sometimes I ask my question just for education for the broader public. Yeah, thank you for that. Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Thompson? Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is tab number six, authorization to amend an employee contract agreement for Jordan Howard, victim advocate, due to a name change and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Ms. Thompson, again, you have the floor.
Okay, um, we are classifying some of our positions in the office. And this particular one, um, all we're doing is just changing a position with two people. And, um, the other contract had a different name and all it is, is a name swap and there is no impact to the budget at all.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I do, Chairman Jones.
Uh-huh, there you go, Ms., uh, Commissioner Carthen.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thompson, for joining us this morning. I, I just, I just have a couple of questions and I, I, I got what you just said. It's just a name update. Um, just before the, the general public's information. Can you tell me if the grant, if there is a grant that you are using for this position? Is this a grant-funded position?
It is a grant-funded position, yes. It is the Boca grant and, um, the contract is linked to that grant.
Okay, my other question for you is, do you remember how much the grant was for this position?
Um, it is a, it is a Boca grant and actually on that Boca grant, I have four employees attached to it.
Okay, with the Boca grant, do they cover, um, vacation days and sick leave and those things?
Yes.
Okay.
They, it's a reimbursement grant, so they, it is only salaries. And I think we, we actually this year put in a little training because we asked for training funds. Um, but it is mostly their salaries, benefits and training.
And training, good. So, it's not a drain on the general budget for Douglas County. It is a grant that your office utilizes to make sure that you can bring the services to the people of Douglas County.
That is correct.
Okay, I'd like to apply the DA.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure that it covers a hundred percent, um, of all the salaries, but it does cover a large portion. It is, um, I would have to look and see, but I think it's like three hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Okay, and the rest, the DA, she just, I'm assuming puts into her budget to cover what it does not cover?
That is correct. And we also, um, usually have a match, but this year we do not. Um, but when we do have a match, we try to get volunteers and we can use that to, um, help with the match.
Okay, uh, I, I'll yield there, but I, I would like to, to know if you can, and you can get this to me offline, if the DA's office had any other needs this year. I know we had to, um, you know, cut some, some funds, you know, from, from all of the departments. So, it's just my thought to see what was it that was cut from your budget? Um, just as we decide to close out our books, just to make sure, because your office is really important, right? It deals directly with the public and, and advocacy, right, right. It's, it's really important. So, I just want to make sure before we go outside to outside entities that we take care of home. So, if you can, just get that to me. You can email it to me at your convenience.
I certainly will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen, and thank you so much, um, Ms. Thompson as well.
Y'all have a great day.
We're going to, you too. Oh, whoa, whoa, don't leave yet, don't leave. I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitchell.
Right, right, right. Hold up. Okay, thank you. J- just a couple of questions. So, you mentioned, you mentioned that, um, that the, the grant, the Boca grant covers four employees and it includes benefits or, or a portion of the benefits? Or how much of this on the county, the, on the county side that we cover? What, what is that roughly? I mean, not, no exact, and I won't hold you to the number, but roughly, what is it on the match side of that we deal with? Because, I mean, I'm glad that we got the grant. I'm glad that we get, get roughly three, four hundred thousand dollars in, in this whole makeup. So, how much of that, two percent, five percent, twenty percent that you think of that we're covering on our end, that does affect your budget?
Um, I cannot answer that, Commissioner Mitchell, until I look at it and can tell you exactly. Um, and the reason that it, it had, and when we first started out, um, to my knowledge, because I assumed it once I took this position, um, it was covering everything. But as the years have gone and raises and everything else, you know, it, it does not. Um, and, but I, but it does cover a large portion. Um, and I, I would have, I don't want to mistake my facts, so I would have to get that information to you.
That's okay. That, that'll be fine. And also, when getting that information, if you would please, how much longer is this grant, um, that you have, this Boca grant? Is it another five years, two years, half a year? What are we looking at in time?
Um, we have had this grant, I've been here twelve years and, and I assumed it when I took this position, so that we've had it a long time. Um, it is on a three-year, um, competitive grant and we renew it every year. I mean, we, we renew it every year, but then it's competitive every third year.
Got it, got it.
So, um, I, I, I do not know it would bend, I guess, on the state budget. Um, how they would, you know, um, allocate the funds.
Understood.
Um, but we, we've had it a while. I've never seen, uh, any change in it, so.
So, with the competitive piece that you mentioned every three years, where are we in that stage of this game? Are we two years in, one year in, or this is the beginning of another three-year period?
This is the beginning of another three-year period.
Got it, got it, okay. Okay, and, and last but not least, if you would, just, I'm just curious to know, kind of what is the match? How much is the match or how much are we contributing to the four employees from our call for? Uh, uh, and not that, I mean, it does matter for, for the general public, so they'll know what that is. Uh, but it's definitely, as Commissioner Carthen talked about, our, our tough, uh, budgets that we're dealing with at this moment, uh, would be something ideal to just know what we're dealing with and, and making that adjustment. So, if you would find that out for us and just so we'll, we'll know from a board perspective, kind of what we're dealing with when it comes to this particular Boca grant.
Okay.
And, and my other question, this is something that you guys have been doing sound like for twelve years. So, this is something you automatically do. There's no, there's no input from our grant writers here or anything of that caliber, correct?
No, sir. Um, like I said, you know, they were doing it way before. Um, I think I've seen paperwork like nineteen ninety-something, um, as far as back as it goes. Um, and what we do now is, when we do the competitive grant, um, prosecuting, attorney counsel is actually our agency on this. And, um, they do it through the, um, CJCC. Um, and so they write, do all the, uh, um, underwriting for us on this grant. And we just, um, do the reporting, which is really nice. Um, so.
Is there a cost for the underwriting of this?
There is not.
Okay, okay. I'm just, you know, I'm curious, because normally there, there is a fee associated with somebody assisting you with doing this, so, um.
Pam handles all of Georgia with this, this list particular.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, Ms. Thompson, thank you again. I think that's all. I think I have here of my notes and I'll yield back and thank you again, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell, and thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. I believe, do we have any other questions before I move on to tab number seven, board? All right, I'm going to move on to tab number seven, authorization to approve 2021 equitable sharing agreement and certification for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Major Holmes, are you on? Major Holmes?
I am. I am on, just getting turned on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Um, this is our version of the equitable sharing agreement with the feds, just for the federal accounts. We'll try to answer a couple of questions, um, now before, so, just to give an idea, these, this is, uh, we have, that I know of three different, uh, of our employees involved in a task force. Uh, we have somebody involved in Homeland Security Task Force, somebody involved with US Monster Task Forces. And we have a couple of members involved in the U-S Secret Service, uh, task force. So, as a result of that, uh, and the forfeitures we've received for this year, um, for twenty, for twenty twenty, we wound up, uh, starting at four hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Uh, we brought in thirty-eight thousand, nine seventy-two, uh, spent out forty-one thousand, nine eighty-seven, which basically leaves us a ending sharing funds balance of four fifty, six forty. That's in the justice funds and then the treasury funds, uh, hundred seventeen thousand, one sixty-one, we started with. Eighteen thousand, three oh three, we, uh, brought in, uh, our balance, one thirty-five, four sixty-four. Um, this is required every year by the US Department of Justice. Uh, it's used to make sure that, uh, we're following their guidelines, uh, in the funds. And as I spoke last meeting as well as now, is these are funds that can't be used to supplement the budget. They can only be used as additions, uh, for law enforcement purposes.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Major Holmes. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Carthen.
Thank you. Good morning, um, Mr. Holmes. Um, my question to you is in regards to, uh, have any of those funds been used in the community? Um, with community programs, um, safety, any, anything like that? Have those, any of those funds been used in the community with the citizens?
I wouldn't have anything out there. I don't, I don't know.
Who, who would know, if, if you don't know? Do you know?
If you can ask the sheriff. Um, I, I don't know what is expended out of that account, I don't handle that account.
Uh-huh.
So it's used for law enforcement funds, so, uh, I would believe, uh, if there's anything there, it would be a very minor amount, but.
Okay.
I don't want to speculate on that.
Got you, okay. So you all just hoed the funds and, and just report what you get in and that, that's it?
No, ma'am, we, we use the funds, like I said a little while ago, we expended thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-two out of the justice funds.
What'd you expend it on? What'd you expend it on?
I don't, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Okay.
I don't, I have the report in front of me. I don't have a detailed description of what we spent that money on.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll get it.
Answer your question.
Uh-huh. Well, I, I'll, I, I would just say, you know, if, if you do this in the future, and this is not just you, I'm not picking on you, just when you, when you guys come before, just for the public's sake, right? I can get the information, I can get it from, from Director Holloman. But we'd just like to at least allow for the citizens of Douglas County to know, because everything is, is dollars and cents, right? So this is just from me to you and anybody else who is on here. When you come before the Board of Commissioners, we would like for you to kind of have that, that available for us, so, um, but I can find out from, from Director Holloman how exactly those funds were, were expended. Um, it's good that you're coming before us and, and presenting it, but we as the Board of Commissioners are now having to give Madam Chair, you know, permission to, to sign the equitable sharing agreement, um, stating that we know what you guys are spending it on and that everything is accounted for. And I know that our CEO, CFO, Jennifer Holloman, is immaculate when it comes to, to audits and finances, but we'd just like to at least let the public know, that's all. But thank you.
You yield back, Commissioner? Are you yielding, okay? All right, any other questions for, um, Major Holmes? If not, thank you so much, Major, and have a great day. Mm-hmm, and thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. We're gonna move on to tab number eight, authorization to enter a memorandum of understanding with the Heritage, uh, Heritage Book Committee of the Douglas County Genealogy Society and the West Georgia Regional Library System for the donation of to one hundred booked, books titled to, uh, the Dog River, um, Public Library in-house for use, uh, only for ten years. Our Director Moore, Lyndon Moore, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Um, this is. Thank you. This is an MOU for, um, the Genealogy Society. The Heritage Book Committee has decided to donate, um, books to establish a special collections, genealogy collection at Dog River, similar to what we have here at the Salmon Drive location. Um, this is so we can understand how the books are to be donated and how they're to be used. Um, essentially, we will house them in our collection for ten years. After that point, um, we will decide, using our collection development, um, policies, whether they will remain in the collection or if they'll be weeded out.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Director Moore. Any questions for Director Moore, Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, so what, um, thank you, Madam Chair. So maybe two, maybe three questions. So what is genealogy, I mean, I, I get it, um, but, but what, what does that mean? What, what are you bringing to the community that they need to be aware of, that they could have access to this special collection, Ms. Moore?
Okay, I'm gonna, um, defer to our branch manager, um, of the Dog River Library. She's been working with them and, um, she knows better, more of what, um, books they plan to donate.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Um, the branch manager, is she on, um, Ms. Moore?
Yes. Katie, are you here?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. Katie, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, um, the Genealogy Society is planning to donate books. These particular books are going to be both for local and even national, possibly worldwide, um, genealogy, which is basically the study of families, family trees, that sort of thing. Um, so this will give our patrons, both here in our county and our region, um, a new source to, and additional sources for even our whole state to be able to access information that could possibly bring them, um, closer to finding information about their heritage, um, both near and far.
No, I, I, the reason I asked that, I just recently did the ancestry.com and I got the little email notice, it's what is coming, is coming. So, um, this is new to me, so it, it is of true interest. I'm sure there's others out there, but it's nothing like an old-fashioned book. While I appreciate the internet and all that it brings and doesn't bring to, 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 to society, I appreciate the old-fashioned book and being input, um, and, and look into that. So this is a special collection, which means what? I would have access to it just to be able to go through it, um, just, I have to look at it there, I can't take it home. How, how does that work when it means I'm gonna give you a free PSA? What is the special collection?
Okay, so basically what's going to happen is, once the books are donated, we will send them to our regional library system to be catalogued in the PINE system. And once they're catalogued in the PINE system, they're gonna be catalogued as what we consider reference materials. And those reference materials are able to be seen in the catalog, so that the statewide system does have access to see those items. Um, but they will stay in-house here at the Dog River Library. And so citizens can come into the library. They do not require, um, a library card in order to utilize the information we record on our end in the. PINE's catalog, that they have used it that way. In ten years, once we have, um, reached the end of this, um, time period that we're setting aside for the MOU, um, we'll be able to access information that'll allow us to know which books have been utilized, um, more frequently, if things need to be reconsidered as to whether they fit for our catalog and our collection and that sort of thing.
I got you. Okay, all right, very good. Can I make copies of stuff that I may find? Like, am I allowed to make copies or you, you only can read it and take notes?
Correct. Um, they are still subject to the copyright laws and so, um, it, it all depends on the actual item, but just as a general statement, they do, we do not allow them to take straight copies from the books.
Understood. All right, I just wanted to make a point. Um, I'm good. Thank you for, for responding. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for bringing her forth. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions for, before I move on? Thank you so much, Lyndon Moore, and thank you so much, um, Mrs. Gordon, Katie Gordon this morning. Certainly, um, expanding our genealogy opportunities here in Douglas County and also for the state of Georgia. It sounds like anyone can, uh, utilize the, this, these books, so thank you. We're gonna move on to tab number nine. Tab number nine is authorization to renew an agreement with the Credit Bureau Systems Incorporated. Uh, DBA, ambulance, medical billing, AM, for emergency medical service billing and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, subject to final legal review. We have Chief Jolivette here this morning. Chief, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners and citizens of Douglas County. On behalf of women and men of Douglas County Fire Department, we would like to thank you for allowing us to serve you. Uh, Madam Chair, respectfully request to have item thirteen removed and sent back to the Fire and Safety Committee for further discussion and review.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, Madam Chair, for, for this presentation, uh, I would like to ask permission to have Courtney Eubanks, our records clerk, Dana Evans, ambulance medical billing representative, and Michelle McHaney, administrative assistant, uh, assist me in this process. Uh, we will address process, oversight, enforcement and accountability, and then also benefits. Uh, Ms. Courtney Eubanks, are you, are you on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, can you answer for me, uh, what is this, uh, depart, what is our department process for dealing with medical billing?
Okay, these are our runs for what they bill for. Anytime an ambulance comes to your home and transports you to the hospital, you will receive a bill for that. And this company will code the bill and look up your insurance and all that stuff and process the bill for you and for us.
Okay, so once it gets to the, uh, company, ambulance billing company, Ms. Dana Evans, can you tell me how you fit into the process?
Yes, sir. Um, so with ambulance medical billing, um, once the ambulance has been dispatched, like Courtney said, and the service is provided to your, your, your community and your patient, the bill will then be transferred, or the actual medical record will be transferred over here to ambulance medical billing. And we have certified, uh, coders who pick the bill up, they code the, the run to the appropriate service level, mileage and modifiers, uh, also with the medical condition of the patient. We then send it over to our billing department, which our billing department will pick it up. Uh, they will do, they will do a scrub through the patient demographics, make sure we have all the correct information, full name information on the patient. We will run eligibility checks on insurance information that is given to us, to make sure that patient is eligible for that, that particular payer. We've also established a right, relationship with your hospital, uh, there, so that if the provider's out in the field, it's an emergency situation or the patient is, um, unconscious, that we can work with your hospital to obtain additional information in regards to that patient's demographics and, um, uh, insurance information. Once we have the bill ready to go out to the payer, we will submit those claims for you. Um, the claims go up to the insurance carrier, insurance carriers will process those claims. They will do one of three things, or one of two things, they will send us a, uh, insurance payment back and we will process all those payments for you. If there's anything left over, we'll in, drop, start dropping statements out to the patients for their portion of it. If the insurance company happens to deny the claim, we have a denial team that will work those denials, get whatever additional insurance, information the insurance company is requesting and then refile that claim, um, out. Once the, uh, claim's been adjudicated by insurance and we're billing the patient, we send three statement notifications. Um, the final statement being a third and final notice. Um, at that point in time, if the patient does not call in and set up a budget plan with us or pay the balance in full, then those accounts are referred on over to your collection agency there in Macon. We do work with patients to, um, get them on a payment plan. We offer electronic payments, uh, through credit cards and ACH check transfers. Um, they can obviously send in a payment through the mail if they like, or if sometimes they do happen to show up down at the administration offices to pay, um, those monies can be transferred up to us and we'll post it as you deposit. Um, from there, uh, that's pretty much it. Um, we take it all the way from the point of providing the service until the claims are completely adjudicated.
Okay, we, we mentioned earlier that, uh, our, our transportation fees are very, uh, good compared to other, uh, providers. Uh, that's something that our Board of Commissioners make sure we take care of our citizens by offering, uh, lower fees. Can you speak to that right quick on private pay and Medicare, just quickly?
So the payer mix in your community is about thirty-five percent Medicare patients, excuse me. And then another thirty percent are true self-pay, meaning those patients don't have any insurance. Um, you have a small Medicaid portion, portion in the community of about fifteen percent. Um, Blue Cross runs around five percent and then the commercial insurance is the, is the remainder of that. So the biggest portion of your payments that, from the claims that are being filed out for you are coming either from Medicare-aged patients or from, um, non-insured. Your current average charge per run is about six hundred and ninety dollars. And out of that six hundred and ninety dollars, after, from, after your contractual adjustments, any bad debt, we're collecting around two hundred and seventy, that's two hundred and seventy dollars per run. So, um, that's pretty good considering your payer mix. Um, with the high rate of private pay that you have, um, that's where we see that, that lesser amount on the, on the revenue per run. Um, that's one of the reasons we established that relationship with the hospital, so that, um, because they are there in your community and we can, with that communication back and forth, we can gain insurance information and patient demographic insurance information from actually what they're billing the patient. So that does help us out a lot.
Okay, and last thing, uh, Michelle McHaney, let us know how this benefit the organization and how does it benefit the citizens in terms of, uh, what we collect in cost and service?
Sure. Um, the benefits to the citizens is that we provide them with the emergency medical services that they need, um, in a timely fashion and a professional manning, uh, excuse me, in a professional manning matter as well. And, uh, those revenues that, um, do come in from the ambulance company are a portion of our budget. Um, the fire department is funded by a couple of different avenues and, uh, one of which is those EMS revenues, which that amount that they collect, basically, it covers almost our operational budget, um, aside from salaries and benefits.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners, we do have, uh, some documents with, with statistics, if you need them. Uh, Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Chief Jolivette, and thank you so much for, uh, firing EMS committee this morning, coming forth, providing some information to our board. Uh, certainly, Ms. Evans, I know we are utilizing the IC, uh, nine, uh, I'm sorry, not nine, but IC-ten, which is the inter, uh, national classification of disease. Uh, so we moved from the nine to the ten, so is that correct? Is that what you're utilizing now?
Yes.
In that class, classification?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Yeah, I heard you mention coding, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we're using the latest and greatest, uh, uh, model. Um, Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for our, for our chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I know Madam Carthen may come behind me technically, so I'll, I'll keep it broad. Um, this is not my swim lane. All right, so, um, I, I, the, the last speaker, uh, was addressing what I was, had an interest in, which is revenue. Um, and a source of revenue. And historically, and Director Holloman, if you're out there, I, I, you know, I'm gonna ask you that question, which is at one point, the Board of Commissioners and the county as a whole had challenges in, uh, collecting this, uh, collecting money. Uh, it was a sore spot for us, not in a bad way, but we were coming through the Great Recession. We realized that we didn't wanna, uh, uh, be debt collectors. Uh, on people who are, um, tax collectors, it is what it is. Being debt collectors on outstanding obligations is something that we, we, we realized that we, it, it was soft, it was out there. We didn't, we weren't, we didn't do a good job at it because it was a conflict for us in our minds. And so we started using, um, third parties to come and get involved in that. So my, my, what, what is the recovery rate? So here's a, a, a general question. What's our recovery? So I understand you're collecting, uh, we bill, so it's a hundred percent. I've got a hundred dollars, I give back a hundred dollars. What is the overall recovery rate? Um, somebody?
Okay, I, I can answer that, but I'm gonna let Dana help me out. Uh, roughly, when we, when we first bill out, we're getting about fifty percent of what we bill back on a, on an annual basis. And then when we, 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 after three months and it, we don't have those funds coming in, then it goes to a collection agency, which, uh, they collect about, they get two point three five percent of everything they collect. And we do have those figures, so Dana, you wanna speak to that right quick?
Yes, as, as, uh, she said, there is a fifty percent collection rate, but you have to keep in mind that there is a portion of that, what you bill out, that has to be adjusted off because of Medicare and Medicaid. Um, you're only allowed to bill out a certain allowed amount on those. And then, of course, for the Medicaid side, there's nothing that you can bill out to the patient side. So what Medicare pay, or excuse me, what Medicaid pays is, is, would be considered a hundred percent collections and you would have to adjust the remainder off. and you would have to adjust the remainder off. Typically, in Medicaid, you're looking at anywhere from, the states vary, but anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent of your charge is what gets paid by Medicaid. Most Medicaid, most state Medicaid are on the lower end of that. And then with Medicare, the Medicare allowable is right around thirty-five percent of your charge amount. From the start of our contract, we've been doing the billing for five years now. From the numbers that were given out in your proposal prior to AMBs during the billing, you were collecting about one point eight million on nine thousand nine hundred runs a month, a year. Right now, we in two two thousand twenty, which was one of, we, I mean, considering most of the services that we bill for your service did very well in two thousand twenty, but it was slightly lower than two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, we collected two point six million on roughly the same amount of runs. So we're looking at a thirty-two percent increase that AMB was able to get for you all in revenue.
Okay, all right, that that was sufficient. Director Hallman, can you remind me just real quickly, if you're out there, as a supplement to this conversation, did we write off something? I know we didn't do anything with it, but did, how do we clean that up? In other words, it was a historical aggregation of just stuff that was out there, we didn't know what to do with it. Can you remind me of that history, please?
Yes, sir. Several years ago, we discussed this in the Finance Committee as well as with our auditors. And in regards to that, we decided that once a determination is made that an account is not collectible, that it should be, you know, written off. The statute of limitations for Georgia is four years. So at this point, the debt could no longer be pursued by magistrate court. So the Finance Committee recommendation that was brought before the board or discussed with the board was on an annual basis that the EMS reserve for uncollectible accounts be reduced to only include accounts that were less than four years old. And so what we've been doing is doing this adjustment every year when we, it's one of the last adjustments we do when we close the books, kind of like tax, that property taxes, we have to wait full sixty days. But we do, in our adjustment, allow for allowance for uncollectibles every year. And so we apply this four-year window to those uncollectibles.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. And you obviously were instrumental in helping shape that as policy. So thank you, Director Hallman. I'm good.
You're welcome.
All right, Chief, I'm good for that. I've got to yield the floor back to my colleagues, to the deputy one, Lynn. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. Any other questions for Chief Jolivette before we move on? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Evans and Ms. Mahaney and also Ms. Eubanks. We're going to move on. Chief, I have the next item. Did I hear anyone for? Okay. I'm going to move on to tab number ten, Authorization to Renew an Agreement with Southern Credit Bureau, DBA creditors, Bureau Association for Collection on Emergency Medical Services Invoices and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents Subject to Final Review. Chief Jolivette?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just an extension to what we have in place with our billing. Once we do the billing process after three months, then we turn, uncollected funds, we turn it over to Southern Credit Bureau using the ambulance billing procedures. And anything that's collected, we get, they get about two point three five percent of what's collected. And we do have oversight of this through our ambulance billing process. Ms. Evans, you want to say a couple of things about that right quick? Ms. Dana Evans?
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so we do place with the Southern Credit Bureau Creditors Agency. We do an auto place each month that bad debt figure is listed each month on the financial summaries. And again, that is after we have billed the patient three statements. They've made no attempt to pay or no attempt to set up a budget plan and then we automatically send those over to the collection agency in their format for them to collect on. Now, at any point that a patient does continue to send a payment here, and that does happen sometimes, they'll pick up an old statement or whatever, they'll send that payment in. We do go ahead and post that, track those and report those back to the collection agency. And then on a monthly basis, the collection agency will report any payments that they've collected back to us and we track those just to make sure that we have an accurate collection balance for those patients.
And the last thing is, Ms. Evans, do we have a system in place that will allow us to treat our citizens with courtesy as we try to collect those funds?
Absolutely. Yes, we have a full department that is dedicated to helping those with their their questions in regards to their bills, our patient services line, they can call direct in there. They will answer any questions, they will work with the patient, again, like I said, to make payment arrangements and and make those payments convenient for them however they can make them, if they want to do a credit card recurring payment, if they want to do an electronic check transfer, or if they just prefer to mail those in here, the team will work with them and let them know. They also work with your Medicare citizens because we know sometimes they have a hard time understanding their EOBs. So those folks on those lines are very well versed on what Medicare does and how they can explain that to your patients on their end to help them understand their billing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Evans. We yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Robinson, I know you still have the floor. Okay, Commissioner Robinson, I believe you had it, but.
No, ma'am, I yield it. We're good.
You yield. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carthen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Jolivette, good morning. My my question to you, and you may not know this, so, but I I do need to ask it. How long have we been with the Southern Credit Bureau? And my second question is, the the Credit Bureau, is it a subsidiary of the billing service that we're using now? So do they work in tandem because they are, you know, a part of each other?
Okay, great question, Commissioner. Ms. Evans, can you help me out with this, please?
Yes, actually, the collection agency that you, we, our parent company is a credit bureau, but not the collection agency that you all utilize to send your bad debt to. The agency that you use is Southern Credit Bureau in Macon. Our our company is actually Credit Bureau Systems in Kentucky. So it is two different entities, but we do work with that collection agency to report back and forth.
Okay. Are you happy with working with them? Is it an easy thing? Does it help our constituents? Do you believe that this is a good working relationship?
Between us and the collection agency, yes. We have not gotten any complaints from any patients as far as that goes when they call in, but our working relationship and transferring information back and forth has been great.
Wonderful. And Chief Jolivette, do you happen to know, or Ms. Eubanks happens to know, how long we have been with the Southern Credit? Will this be our second, you know, third, fourth engagement with them?
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Eubanks.
I believe it's been the whole five years we've been with AMB. We've also utilized that collection agency also.
Okay. And so this will now go into procurement. This, I'm putting on my procurement hat, although that's not my committee. I I would just say that maybe moving forward after this, we need to look at, are we getting, you know, is is this a situation or a contract that we want to continue? Do we want to bid it out? Do we want to see who's out there and possibly bring, you know, bring in other entities that we could possibly do business with?
We actually have it on the agenda for our March Fire EMS Committee to start looking at the process again for us since it's been the five years.
Oh, you guys are ahead of me. Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much. Those are my questions. Thank you, Chief Jolivette. And Chief Jolivette, I just have to say, thank you for doing what you just did. I mean, you had everybody there so that the questions we as Board of Commissioners would ask. You you had everybody there so that we could get the answers and so that the the constituents could get the answers as well. So I just want to say kudos. Thank you for coming in and and being about the business. I love it. I yield, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. All right, if there's no other questions or comments from the board, Commissioner Mitchell, I hear you. I hear you coming.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Chief Jolivette, I I appreciate and I concur with Commissioner Carthen about definitely having your team on board and having everybody here because you know, we we toss out a lot of questions. There's a lot of Q and A, so thank you for doing that much and doing your due diligence and having those that, because we don't expect you to know all the answers. I mean, I know you have them all, you're like me, you know, I know all the answers, but you know, I have a team of folk who really know the answer. So thank you again for that. But my question though, and it may be for the ladies, and and maybe you can, is that two-point, whatever that percentage, is that an add-on pass-through to those that, when we go out and collect? Or is that a portion of that money is being taken off of what they're owed? I mean, help me understand that whole process. So I don't know if that's something that you can ask, I mean, answer, or is it that your team could answer that question for me?
Okay, Ms. Eubanks, when we collected the funds we received in two thousand twenty, where were the, what that, what was that amount from that third party?
From our collection agency?
Yeah, and what I'm getting at though, Ms. Eubanks, I'm trying to get at, do we add on that? Let's say these guys owe five hundred dollars for being picked up by an ambulance services. Do that two percent or whatever that percent when we go through a collection, after they don't end up paying, go through a collection, do that number become now five hundred and eighty dollars? You know, or or it backs off on the five hundred dollars that we were trying to collect that we pass it on to a collection agency? Is it a pass-through? Okay, help me with that.
Yeah, sorry. That percentage does come out of what that the collection agency actually collects.
Got it, got it. So so it's a it's a reduction of the amount that we hopefully would have collected through these guys doing the, doing their business correct. However, when we pass it on to a collection agency, they charge us a percentage to collect whatever they're trying to collect. And how much, how much do they normally collect on a percentage basis? They they collect a hundred percent of all that we transfer over to these guys, or they're collecting roughly, you know, forty percent? Or what what is that magical percentage add or number, if you know?
I don't have that one. Dana Evans may have that one, a more specific number than what I do have.
Got it.
Yes, I do have what the the billing agency, as the billing agency, we are collecting anywhere, over the past five years, it's been fifty to fifty-three percent of your net charges. Now, the collection agency themselves, that number will be much lower. They usually collect anywhere from three to five percent on patient balances that have been sent over to a collection agency.
Got it, got it. And and one of the, what's the acronym EOB? What is that?
EOB?
Yes.
That is Explanation of Benefits. It's just that piece of paper you get in the mail from your insurance after they've processed your claim that tells you how much they paid, how much is your portion to pay, and the doctor or medical service that they paid that to.
Great, thank you. Because I was like, when you guys shooting out these acronyms, I'm like, I don't even know what you guys are talking about. It's talking over my head, so. But no, I truly appreciate it. Okay, well, outside of that, okay, well, well, good stuff. And and what is the ask here in this conversation that we're having? Are you guys just making us aware of the collection process? I I mean, what is the ask here, though, other than just giving the public and the commissioners just an update on on the collection process? Or, I mean, chief, what is the ask here?
Yeah, yes, what it is, is we want to make sure that the community is aware of the process and also looking at the oversight, what we do for oversight, our enforcement and also our accountability. So it's just more of a user-friendly system to let the community know that we appreciate having them as citizens and we also appreciate the board for allowing us to come in at some reasonable prices in terms of transport compared to other cities. I think Ms. Evans would would tell you that other agencies are charging seven, eight, nine hundred dollars for transport and we we're keeping the costs down to six hundred. And then, of course, we're trying to make sure that we use those funds to take care of the citizens. That's what it is, just awareness.
Okay, okay. So and I and I appreciate that. And 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 I appreciate you at least trying to make the citizens of Douglas County aware of this particular process and the system that 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 where we provide this type of services to these guys and the cost and and what that process is. And I'm assuming accounting definitely loved the mere fact of this process because when we're talking to Jennifer and others and and David, these guys want to know kind of what is that process on top of what's being collected or not being collected because that affects the budget as well. So not that we, I don't know if they account for or calculate the budget based off a collection rate that you guys have. I I hope not, but I I just don't know kind of what they, what their process is. But knowing this, I think this only benefits them. Okay, well, I yield. Thank you again, and I yield, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell and Ms. Evans and also Fire Chief. Well, I'll be hosting just an update with you. And Ms. Evans, we will have like a virtual meeting very soon so we can discuss late postings related to Medicare and Medicaid billing. Had an opportunity to be the director of inpatient and outpatient billing for the University of Colorado Hospitals. So, Ms. Evans, I know you're well aware, you have a certain time to get those charges in, particularly for Medicare and Medicaid, and if not, they are considered late and sometimes you just don't approve. So I want to see if we can make, we can just review our our past history and see where we are today and see what we can do to capture and make sure that we fall within that. When I, it was back in the day, probably ten years ago, it was a five-day window to get those charges in. But we'll talk offline, okay, Ms. Evans? Okay, all right, we're going to move, any other questions, boys, so I can, so we can move to the next one? All right, we'll move to the next one. The next tab is tab number eleven, Authorization to Approve a Contract with Resource Management Consultants For the Amount of Four Thousand Dollars For the Assistance With the Firefighter's Grant Application For the Vehicle Apparatus Ladder Truck Replacement And Turnout Gear for New Recruits As Recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee And Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Chief Jolivette, again?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. Every penny matters in Douglas County as well as in the Fire Department. And we had the opportunity to work with a company in in terms of getting a grant for a ladder truck. Ladder truck, the reason why we need a ladder truck is in two thousand nineteen, we had a crash on I twenty and it totaled our ladder truck. And when insurance processes and everything came in, we was well under the amount we paid for that ladder truck. So the Fire Safety Committee members was also asking in the past for alternate ways to to fund the ladder truck. And we was fortunate to be able to get some information on assistance to firefighter grant program. And so we were trying to use that program in terms of grants to replace the ladder truck, one point five million for ladder truck and grants that we've we've tried to get done as well as some replacement for our turnouts for our, well, actually do turnouts for our new recruits we have in training now, which average about seventy-nine thousand dollars. So a four thousand dollar investment is, it'd go a long way. And hopefully, if we get the the grant, we can save those coffers of splotch and we can use those in other areas of the of the departments and all. So the community benefit, it helps by improving our ISO rating, our public protection classification. And like I said earlier, it helps on saving splotch dollars so we can provide other areas with splotch opportunities.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, and I know you're speaking and also I'm going to ask you if you could just keep driving the meeting for me. I need to step away, okay? You have the floor, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, real quickly, so how many fire trucks have we replaced associated with this splotch, do you know?
I have Deputy Chief Ziegmeier, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Help me with that question. I know we have a a engine coming in and also ambulance, but speak to the history of the splotch in terms of fire trucks and ladder trucks.
I'm looking right now, chief. I think we've had a, we've played with this particular splotch. We've replaced four fire trucks and either four or five ambulances with the splotch money.
So four and four, and what is the total fleet?
We have ten engines in service. We have four spares, we have seven ambulances with four more spare ambulances. Two ladder, or two ladder trucks, no spare because we're using our spare. Two ladder trucks, no spare because we're using our spare to cover for the truck that's been involved in the accident, a heavy rescue, and staff vehicles.
So, the, thank you, Deputy Chief. So these are replacement vehicles, we got feedback, put yourselves on. Thank you. I'm still getting feedback. Can you guys put your microphones on? Mute if you're not on the call. Thank you. All right, so, to that point, so chief, question for you. So we've replacing this vehicle, it's, the salvage value didn't give us enough for us. We're looking for this grant writer to come in and help us. Is this a guaranteed grant? Is it a competitive grant? What is this?
It's competitive. The government gives X number of dollars, make them available X number of dollars to fire departments across the United States, and so it's a very competitive grant. But at this point, we're, have some good, we set up real right for this grant because we're using a reserve truck, ladder truck, and we do have a lot of issues that have happened to this reserve truck over the years. And so we are in a good position to create some competitiveness for that ladder, new ladder truck.
All right, so it's, have we ever used this in Douglas County? This is the first time we ever sought this grant in Douglas County. Did you bring this to the table? It's just something that we've always historically gone after, we just weren't successful?
We haven't used, to my knowledge, a vehicle grant. Chief Zackmeyer might can speak to it, but this is something new that, it was time-sensitive, and it was something that we wanted to get in on the table. That way, we wouldn't have to just automatically turn the splosh for a 1.5 million price tag. So it was something that was available, we want to take advantage of it right away, and I think we was successful. I know we were successful in getting all the documents and everything together to put in for it. It was something that we wanted to take advantage of, and I mean, with our major thoroughfare coming through here, we need that drug for ISO and other areas.
No, that's sufficient. I'm going to yield as the Commissioner of District, too. To my peers, the floor has been yielded to me. Any further questions on this business item? None?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
My apologies. Okay, so chief, so you brought this grant to the table? This is a new grant, I mean, that you kind of seeked out as you came aboard? Or is it like Vice Chairman Robinson stated earlier, something that we've been kind of doing throughout Douglas County history?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it's something I brought to the table. I am a peer reviewer for the AFG Grant Program, and I've read many of grants and looked at many of opportunity, and Douglas County was ripe for this grant. We met all the, everything we needed. It was just time-sensitive, and we were just trying to get it pushed through so we can make sure we can be competitive and have a chance at those 1.5 million funding. And then with the new recruits that we started, rather than write a check for $79,000 out of splosh, we was able to apply for assistance as well with AFG. So we hoping that we get it.
And chief, is there a match to this particular grant that we have to look at as the wirecoffer? Or is it strictly all grant-funded, 100%?
Yes, sir, there's a match. It normally runs between 10 to 15%. And we did, we looked into our budget, and we was able to find matching funds and make it a budget neutral situation. So it was kind of everything lined up just right for us, and we hoping and praying we get that grant so we can help those, help the citizens with splosh dollars somewhere else.
So, you actually have within your budget currently a 10 or 15% possible match if you get the 1.5, if I'm hearing you correctly?
Yes, sir, we received funds from the insurance company, which was around, right under $300,000. So that put us in line to have matching funds to take care of this grant if we get it.
And did you, and I know it's probably a redundant question, but you actually wrote the grant, or did?
We assisted the grant writer, and
Was it our grant writer though, chief, or was it another grant writer from Guam?
It's the grant writer with the company that we're talking about, Resource Management Consultants, and I've sit, I've been around that particular company, and they're pretty good at what they do. So it was an opportunity to get a good qualified grant writer in to help us out, and also they work with our grant, they work with our departments to get good data. Because that's what's in, that's what we have to deal with when we do grants, is have good data. Run data, equipment data, problems, that kind of thing. We was able to work with our team internal and also with the county personnel to help us out with it.
Yeah, but chief, were you aware that we had a grant writer on board at the county? Did you know that, or were you not aware of that?
Yes, sir, yes, I was aware, and we actually coordinated some with our county grant writer. And I was aware of that as well.
So you did attempt to use our current grant writer versus, I don't know what this resulting management company charged to do the writing of that grant?
Well, at the time, by me being new to the county, I didn't, I didn't really seek out our grant writer per se because I didn't really know exactly what they were actually experiencing writing grants for AFG. But we still coordinated with them, and I think it was a win-win situation for us. And with the time sensitive, the grant was, it's going to be due real soon, so we didn't have much time to act on it. But in the future, we want to make sure that we use what we have in-house 100% to make sure that we incur, you know, make sure we take care of good savings for the citizens of Douglas County.
Absolutely, and that's why I was saying that is because of the mere fact of, I don't know what this company charged, you know, to write this grant, but I'm assuming there definitely is a fee, or am I correct in making that statement, correct?
Yes, sir, they charged us $4,000. It was $5,000 altogether, but they gave us a $1,000 discount. And generally, they wrote two grants for us. They did the ladder truck, which was about $2,000, and of course, they did the turnouts, the $2,000. So, like I said earlier, we want to make sure we call savers and we come to writing grants and deal with the community.
Oh, it makes sense. I'm not, I'm not, you know, harping about, you know. I just want to make sure that you are aware that we do have a grant writer in-house that should be actually, you know, helping with or assisting with this whole process. Or matter of fact, she should be actually finding these grants for you.
Yes, sir.
Assisting you through the whole process. So, okay, all righty, chief, I'm going to leave it there. Thank you again, and I'm going to yield back the floor to Vice Chairman Robinson, and almost I'm going to go back to Madam Chair, though, Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, are you complete?
I am done, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, are you back?
I'm back.
All right, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you, Vice Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Vice Chairman. All right, there are no other questions on this particular item that we just discussed. We're going to move on to tab number 12, which is Authorization to Accept a Bid from Prime Foundation LLC in the amount of $794,000 for construction of a metal building at the fire department training complex utilizing 2002 splosh, splosted funds, 600, in a total of $676,000, and 2016 splosh funds in the amount of $125,000 as recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Chief Joel Yvette, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank the former Fire and EMS Committee members for working diligently and finding cost-saving solutions to mitigate the need for constructing a medical building. A metal building, I'm sorry. We tasked Chief Zackmeyer with answering a few questions for us as long as, as well as giving us the explanation. Chief Zackmeyer, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, can you speak to this?
So this, like I said, we had put this out for bid a couple of times. We've, to try to get the lowest price we could get. The company that qualified in his low bid is the group that we're talking about here. The building's purpose is to house all of our equipment, reserve equipment. Right now, we have, I mentioned a few minutes ago, we have four reserve engines and ambulances. We have those either in a station, in a fire station now, taking up room in their bay that they work in every day, or sitting outside in the weather. This building would allow us to centralize all of our equipment, get it under a roof, get it in the heated area, you know, with fire trucks and water in them, you know, in the cold outside, that doesn't always work out well with the diesel motors also. So it's a way for us to get all of our stuff centrally located, get it in out of the weather. The maintenance should lessen because they're not sitting outside, and it's a benefit to us and the citizens of the county.
And also, like Chief was saying, Deputy Chief was saying, our citizens benefit by not incurring cost.
Chief, you're echoing. Will everyone just, please turn your mics off, so chief, you have the floor again.
Thank you. Like I said, the main thing is citizens would benefit thus not having to incur additional maintenance costs in terms of our vehicles. And with all that, say, I'd like to yield the floor back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any questions from the board regarding this tab? Okay, sounds good. We'll move on to the next tab, and we're now going to move to tab number 13. Fire Chief, we're going to, we'll reserve that and come back, it needs to come before the committee, and this is one that I recall us discussing. Is that tab number 13, chief? I just want to verify with you.
Yes, ma'am, tab number 13.
Okay, we're going to move on to tab number 14. Yes, yes. Commissioner Robinson?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Now you can hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, all right, real quick. So Director Holman, I just heard something. So we're using $2,002 splosh, $600,000. Director Holman, help me, please. Why is that outstanding? I know why, but just for the record, so where was that sitting?
That is sitting in a separate splosted fund. We actually have still two remaining projects from the 2002, 2002 splosh that are active. One is the fire department's training facility, and the other one is an intersection improvement on the DOT side. So cash is in the bank, sitting in a separate account as required, and those are the only two active projects that are remaining in the 2002 splosh.
We did extend, I'm going somewhere, we did extend money from the 2002 to finish some of Boundary Waters fields, correct? The football field or soccer field, do you remember?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can look it up and see. But yeah, I do know that there were some, you know, some projects or some funding that we were shifting around. But then now, that was one of the things that I had Michelle double back with both Miguel and Chief Spencer at the time to say, okay, you each have one project, here's the budget for that project, and here's, you know, and here's what you've spent, if there's been any money spent, and here's what you have remaining. So in our system, we balance the cash with those two projects only.
Okay, so that was specifically for, it was for fire, not public safety, correct?
Correct.
The 2002 splosh was a general, it wasn't a single source, single item, though, but that was for that area. Fire, that was the remaining project for them, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, okay, all right. Director Holman, you're good on that one right now, thank you. And Gary, I know the answer, Gary Dukes, I know the answer, that we did take care of some fields. But this is my point, is we've got money from 20 years ago that we have not used. Thank you, chief, we appreciate you, Zach, I appreciate you. I'm making a point. Well, we spent that money on that jail pretty fast. Uh huh. But we weren't maintaining. We didn't maintain the parks, we weren't replacing equipment. It's about priorities, right? And again, yes, citizens, we're sitting on $2, $3 million that we had spent from 20 years ago. And here we are, we're just now, it's like, you know, again, I, I'll acknowledge the fact that, you know, when I came onboard, we realized that in '09, they're pushing a jail splosh, but it's like you hadn't finished what you've got. Right? And it was like, well, what about the citizens? And so we're starting back over here, and I'm making a point. Everything seems to be so concentrated, but I appreciate the diligence that Chief, it's some historical welcome to the party. But there's something here that speaks to, guys, pay attention. We now know, the citizens like, okay, this is why we're in the situation we are. And we can't make it all back up in one moment, but I'm making the point. Be diligent, be thoughtful about the tax dollars that we do have. Let's, 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 let's do right, right? It's not always about the spend. It's like, what did you do with the money you had before? And it's truly being accountable, and it's just, again, this is only because we, as commissioners, ask. It just sits there, right? Nobody's saying anything. No one's saying anything. So if staff's not saying anything, and the commissioner's not saying anything, and the citizens, all we're doing is, the system is taking money from the citizens, and it's just amassing. That's not right. All right, so I think what we're saying, we want to go to another level. And so we thank you for you guys even identifying this, it's okay. You went back and you were able to leverage that, and today, thank you. We appreciate that, chief. Madam Chair, I just had to make that statement because I'm like, did y'all know what they just said? That was money from 2002. Are we talking about doing another splosh? You ain't spent one two terms ago, two, two, two splosh ago? Okay, I think you get my point. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. We're good.
Okay, any other comments before I move to tab number 14? And clerk, please make a note to remove tab number 13. I don't want it to flow into the consent agenda tomorrow. We're going to move to tab number 14, Authorization to Utilize Splosh Funds. Women, Authorization to Utilize Splosh Funds to Purchase a SBA Refill Station for the amount of $33,711.39 to be utilized at the fire department training complexes as recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Chief Joel Yvette, you have the floor again. Your microphone is on, chief. I mean, off, yeah, there you go, turn it on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. The SCBA refilling station that we're trying to purchase is something that will help us with our training. SCBA stands for Self-Containued Breathing Apparatus. We're going to be really utilizing our training facility in the near future, and we're going to be cycling engine companies in and out, and to save time and getting them back in service, we're going to be, we're going to need to refill the SCBAs and put them back on the trucks so they'll be able to use for service. Chief Zackmeyer, you want to take over here and explain what's going on with the SCBA refilling station? The need for, and how it's going to benefit the community?
Yeah, I'd like to echo with the chief. This is what we use to fill our air bottles. We have the capability to fill them now in-house, but we've got one piece of equipment that does it. So not only would this help us at our training center, but it'll be a secondary means of filling these bottles. If our air and light truck, the SCBA truck needed service, or if it went down, we would have a secondary means of filling our bottles.
Okay, chief.
I think you froze.
Did you get it? I'm sorry, did you get it?
Yes.
The benefit, like I said, to our department and the citizens of the county was to have secondary means of filling the bottles. If we were not capable, we have partnerships with other counties that we could get them filled, but it would take a good length of time to transport them to another county, get them filled, and bring them back. So the big thing, like the chief said, it's a way to fill these bottles. It'll help us in our training. We don't have to pull that truck to the training center anymore. We'll have a way to fill it there. And in case that truck does go down, we have a secondary means of filling the bottles.
And the air and light truck is currently stored at Lithia Springs?
It's Station 7 on Veterans Memorial there, near the old Greystone Power.
Excellent. Madam Chair, we yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much, um, Deputy Chief and Chief. Uh, any questions from the board? All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move on.
Just one minute here, just one minute here.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell, there, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Chief, if you would, just speak to, I know this is off-topic, it, it just still dealing in the fire and EMS. So could you speak to the fact of, we had a couple of calls about, and I think I passed this call on to you about this fire station, don't get the number on the north side there on, uh, Dallas that was supposedly closed? Or can you kind of speak to the general public about that not being closed? And what were, what was the take on that? And kind of how did they even come about, though, if you would please?
Yes, sir. Uh, due to COVID and, uh, all the new things that are going on now with the pandemic, most of our stations, uh, appear to be closed, but they're not. Uh, this particular station was not closed. And, uh, what we're gonna do is, as an effort to ensure the public that we're not closed, is we're gonna find ways to interact more with them, uh, using the social distance and wearing our mask and, uh, that type of thing. But it, it was not closed. I did talk to, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner.
Councilman.
Yes, Councilman. Did talk to her, and Richard heard that the station wasn't closed. Uh, I did W check with all our personnel, and, uh, everybody was happy with it, but we're gonna be more visible, uh, as the months and, uh, years come, to come. Uh, but it, it was not closed, and, and, uh, we, we thank them for calling us. And we got on it right away and got right back to them. That's the main thing. We want to get right back to our citizens when, and also our councilmen when they have issues of concern. So, uh, you know, Station Seven in question, but it was not closed at the time.
And I just want to tell you thank you, because I think you did an excellent job of getting back to these guys and getting back to the community with the notion of it is not closed. So I appreciate that. But I, I just want to kind of just for the record and let people know that, uh, no stations are closed, that, that, that's unacceptable. And that, um, this one here in particular wasn't closed, but I don't know how that notion got out that it was closed. But I'm glad to clear it up really quickly, and thank you again for that. And with that being said, uh, thank you again, Chief, and Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Uh, if there are no other questions, uh, regarding this particular topic, Board, uh, members, members, I'm gonna move on to tab number fifteen. At your pleasure. Tab number fifteen, Authorization to Utilize SPOLOST Funds to Purchase Equipment, Laptops, Cameras, and Speakers Needed to Continue Virtual Meetings and Mandatory Online Training In the Amount of Fifteen Thousand Forty-three, um, Dollars and Forty-Cents As Recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Chief Joe LeVette, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, Citizens. Uh, this purchase, uh, will help us in terms of our preparation for our, uh, ISO and also our pub protection classification. Uh, the equipment that we're looking at purchasing will assist us with meetings, uh, Microsoft Team meetings and things where our personnel are in the field. Uh, so it's, it's a big push to get this done. Uh, Deputy Chief Zackmeyer did the research on it. Deputy Chief Zackmeyer, you want to talk about your research on this project?
Yes, sir. And, and like the chief said, we, this is gonna help us, uh, huge, help us with the, the ISO stuff, uh, getting our, our training in, uh, reporting on our trucks, our incident reporting, all these things. Our computers were all purchased before the pandemic, pre-pandemic. Um, the thought of needing a camera in a computer and the microphones, you know, hadn't, hadn't even registered with us yet. Um, so what we're doing is having to go back to each one of the fire stations and, and up, upgrade those computers so that they have the microphones and, and those kind of things, so we can continue with our meeting. Uh, our meetings as we do now, we, I think we're in probably the Teams world from now on. So even post-pandemic, we'll still get to utilize this stuff.
Uh, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, one thing we're also looking at is, uh, doing some virtual, uh, public education for our schools and also our, our citizens. So we're gonna need those as the help of that as well, but we're looking at, uh, being more visible and being more, uh, public friendly. So this will help us out.
Okay. Thank you so much, uh, both, uh, Chief and Deputy Chief. Any questions from the board? Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, this one speaks to a broader, and this is, this is somewhat, um, to my peers. So we're, you know, right, we're in a telecommuting COVID, almost getting through the, halfway through pandemic, on the, on the back nine of the pandemic, hopefully. And here we are, um, we're using SPOLOST dollars to provide for infrastructure. Now, we've got COVID money that should be used for infrastructure. It's, it's all relative, right? It's all one bucket of money, as I, I would say at the end of the day. But I mean, I mean, this, and I appreciate it, Chief, we're just now getting around to this. See, ISO, whatever, ISO had always been there. Got it. It makes us bring into alignment. Gotcha. But the pandemic was something that says that we, we should have been already down this path and providing these guys with stuff that's out in the field, that's active, that is our frontline, that they don't have any equipment. They don't have what they need to stay plugged in. So how have y'all been doing this? And it just makes me, it was, you don't have to defend it. When I ask questions, it's, it's, you don't have to, it's more rhetorical, because to my peers, like, really? Right? So I'm, I'm back to, okay, what is our plan and what is the priority? And you, you have limited dollars. And again, we appreciate it, Chief, you coming in like, look, okay, while y'all working this out, I, I gotta get stuff done. I appreciate it. Don't get me wrong. Uh, I'm just looking at, okay, well, SPOLOST, the most ideal source versus this, versus, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to lean one way or another, but it just makes me like, I'm still back to like, wait a minute, we're almost a year into this? They ain't got no equipment out in the field? They can't plug in? What are they doing, smoke signals? I mean, and, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm advocating, Chief, I mean, I'm, I'm supporting this, but I, I have to drive home a point of thoughtfulness from my peers, the guys, okay. It's exposing some things, is our point, right? We show up every two weeks. We get to ask questions. Okay, so what's going on? Right? Well, so we provide oversight to your oversight, Chief. So we're like, okay, what now? Right? And so we appreciate that. Um, um, wow. I'm, 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 I'm in support of this, Madam Chair. Obviously, I, I'll yield to the fire EMS. This is the proper source. I'm, I'm okay for the, the resolution that was passed for IT, but it's just like, wow, guys. Wow. So it's, it's just something for me to think about. I'm, I'm not gonna belabor this right now, Madam Chair. I may have come back with some later questions. Let me yield the floor. I just had to express that, like, wow, these guys didn't have any equipment. And again, we're going on a year, on what, March eleventh, twelfth, you knocked this thing over, Madam Chair? You, you're less than thirty days later, right? 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 Within, within thirty days, Madam Chair, when you knocked this place over. We, we sheltered. And they're just now getting this stuff? That, that's all. It was just, I had to drive home that, like, okay, it's awareness. So I think we all get it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Carthen, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Uh, to my colleague's point, uh, this is probably more in line with COVID. And I would say, since we do have that bucket, you know, I don't want to usurp the Fire EMS's committee authority, but I would just say, if you guys would look at that and see if we could pull that out of the, the, the COVID resolution funds that we have set aside, because this does co, you know, it, it, it co-mirrors what we should be doing, right? This, this helps the fire, the fire EMS, nine-one-one. It helps them to communicate with the citizens, because it's a pandemic. And so we want to make sure that we avail ourselves of all of the resources and the technology. So, um, it would be my hope that the Fire EMS Committee would go back and possibly recommend this coming out of the COVID resolution funds.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes.
Do, do you think that the Fire EMS can go back and get that?
I, I think it'd be perfect. And then the recommendation at that point would be just me going in and just transferring that money out of the, uh, technology, which is a very good point. Uh, uh, Chief, we could move very quickly, because those dollars are sitting there and ready to go. So, uh, that, that, um, I will chat with you. So we're gonna remove this item, and we have one more that we may want to remove too, that may, uh, affect technology, and it's related to our CAD. It's fifteen thousand. So I believe, uh, as we go, Board of Commissioners, there may be another item that I want to consider as well, to move from, uh, the, uh, COVID funding.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Deputy Chief, we're gonna, we're gonna move this, uh, Clerk, please remove it, but we're gonna take care of it, Chiefs. After this meeting, I'll meet with you, and then we'll take care of it, okay? It'll be done. All right, we're gonna move on to tab number sixteen. And I know this one may be one that I know we, that hopefully our board would consider, uh, taken out of the SPOLOST. Authorization to Utilize SPOLOST Funds for Equipment Vest and Helmets Needed to Complete the Ballistic Equipment Program In the Amount of Thirty-One Thousand Twenty-Six Dollars and Ninety-Cents As Recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee. And Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Chief, again, can you explain why we need these, uh, additional vests?
Yes, ma'am.
As we discussed in our committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. Uh, Chief Zackmeyer, please speak to the need of the ballistic vest. What, what made us decide to, uh, go this route?
So this is something that we, we'd looked at, uh, um, in the past. Uh, most all of the fire departments, local fire departments here in EMS services already had these, uh, vests and helmets. Um, we had a conversation with Madam Chair, got a lot of support from her. We began a program back in two thousand twenty where we bought twenty-five sets. It didn't completely outfit everybody that's in the field. They were having to, uh, share a vest, uh, kind of deal. So we went back and looked, and there were thirty more positions that we needed to cover. Uh, and this is the thirty that we need to have everybody that's on a fire truck, ammo, in the field, in a vest and helmet.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, we yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, any questions regarding the helmets and the ballistic vest? Okay, sounds, okay, good. Thank you. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move on to tab number seventeen. Authorization to Utilize SPOLOST Funds to Purchase Upgrades for the CAD System In the Amount of Fifteen Thousand Four Hundred and Thirty-four Dollars As Recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Uh, before I, I certainly, uh, respond, um, to this request, certainly, I, if you could, Chief, just explain what the CAD system is used for, and it may be an opportunity to, uh, certainly draw down from our COVID nineteen funds as well, as related to technology. But let's, let's talk about it first, before I go too fast. You have the floor, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the CAD system is a relatively new system that was upgraded recently. And, uh, they're looking at other upgrades to the system. In order for the fire department to be successful, uh, we have, we have to make some upgrades as well. Uh, to this, to the exact specifics of it, uh, Chief Zackmeyer can tell us more about it. Uh, he actually been there and done the research. And Chief Zackmeyer, what, what's our, uh, take on this?
So the, the, the CAD system allows us to communicate with our dispatchers in the CAD system, um, by computer. So a lot of things that, you know, can't be said over, over the radio, um, we do on this CAD system. It enables us to, uh, get a call summary from our dispatcher. Uh, it's got our pre-fire plans of all of our buildings. Um, it gives us our call times, location maps. We can throw up a neighborhood on the computer and show exactly where the house is in the neighborhood. It, uh, has, uh, hydrant layer on it, where we can look at all the hydrants in a, in a subdivision that we're responding to. And it, it'll tell us any hazards, you know, that, that we need to know. Um, like I said, our, our computers, the CAD system allows our computers in our, physically in our trucks, to communicate with the, the, the nine-one-one center. Uh, the nine-one-one center has gone to a new CAD system, and this is money that we need to actually update our stuff, so that we can still communicate with them.
Madam Chair, we yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief and Deputy Chief. Board of Commissioners, any questions regarding this item? Before I ask, if we, you know, certainly your pleasure to move it to technology. Uh, Commissioner Robinson, Vice Chairman, you have the floor.
Yeah, th- thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, on, on this one, now, I've got to go back to the sixteen million dollar tower. Yeah, we just, radio system, this, okay, so, um, and again, we just wanted to get to infrastructure, and I get it. But this seems to be related to that as relates to SPOLOST. And I, I'll yield to Commissioner Mitchell, obviously, on this one to say, but, but this one's like, no, it's a no-brainer. Yeah, I mean, okay, I, I have no problem. I don't, uh, not support the need to, um, um, I'm gonna call it like an add-on, uh, to leverage the use of thi- this big platform that we've built. Um, and so I, I, it goes commensurate. I mean, while you, I mean, it's sort of like, buy the radios, you know? You got a tower, but buy the radios, buy the software, buy, I mean, sync it up, be holistic. And I, I appreciate that this is just sort of a fill-in. Um, but I, I, I think this year is more appropriate, uh, with SPOLOST, because it's tied, it's just an extension of money that had already been, um, as part of a, a referendum by the public, um, that, that Fire and EMS was a, a major, um, um, of importance, and specifically that, um, that tower, to a certain extent, as being an, an outlier. So I, I'm gonna tie it to that, and Madam Chair, I can support this as is. So I'll yield the floor to my peers to sort of clarify what they're gonna do with this, but I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, any other comments from our Board of Commissioners? And I just want to make sure you weigh in and just say that you support this as, as is with the SPOLOST, which is what this committee is proposing.
Chairman, I, yes, I, I, I agree. This is still SPOLOST-related. So this, this item should, should stay as you guys, uh, recommended it from the EMS and Fire Committee.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, you have any comment?
I concur. I concur. I mean, well-stated by Vice Chairman Robinson and Commissioner Carr.
Okay, thank you so much. With that being said, uh, we're gonna move on to our next item, and thank you so much, uh, Chief Joe LeVette. We had a run this morning, but great, great job, you and your team. And thank you so much, Deputy Chief Zackmeyer as well. All right, we're gonna move on to tab number eighteen. Authorization, uh, well, authorized resolution to support an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, For the Community Development Assistance Program, CDAP, And Technical Assistance with the Lithia Springs Small Area Study. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Manager Ron Roberts.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, everyone else. Hope everybody had a good Valentine's Day. Uh, so in your packet this, this morning is a, a resolution in support of exactly, um, what Madam Chair just outlined. It's the CDAP, the, uh, Community Development Assistance Program. Uh, just as a refresher, uh, in two thousand eighteen, we applied, the county applied for, uh, CDAP, um, Community Development Assistance Program to, uh, update our Unified Development Code, which we got some assistance with that, and we're still working through, um, finishing that up. We had, uh, a series of, um, of changes that came through, uh, in December, as you may recall. The ask this morning is for, um, us to move forward, staff to move forward with an application for the Lithia Springs Small Area Plan. Uh, my senior planner, Allison Duncan, has done a lot of legwork. Uh, we've had two calls with the citizens in that area, stakeholder groups that, um, have come together. Um, very active. Uh, on each call, it was somewhere between twenty and thirty-five people. Um, very excited, uh, uh, community. Um, and, uh, we were also identified, she's also identified parcels throughout the area. And so the, the, the ask here is, um, is, is the resolution supported this? Because what we want to do is, is, is get some, um, to move the needle even further. Um, the, um, CDAP program previously had a percentage match of twenty percent. Um, this, this, this year, they have made it a flat fee. Um, so it's a, uh, it would be a three thousand dollar, uh, would be the county's portion and, uh, for the, uh, study, for them to help us to identify, um, uh, best-case scenarios. Look around the region for other, um, small area like Lithia Springs, and bring forth some recommendations for, for, uh, future planning and, uh, identify some activities for implementation in that area with that stakeholder group. There's an additional five hundred dollar flat fee for, uh, training of the, the PNC Board and the Board of Commissioners to help, um, when, once those studies are identified and put, and put together, then they would, that, that would be brought forward, and we could have those to, uh, to look at and, and, and really drill down on what we want to do in this area. The, um, so the total asked financially for, from, would be a thirty-five hundred dollar. But I have here not to exceed five thousand, because that's the most that I have in my budget to, uh, put towards this project. Um, and that's it. That's, uh, so I'll open, open to questions, and Allison's also on here with questions. But what I did want to add, um, in these calls, we've actually had three of the Planning and Zoning, uh, Board members, uh, participate. We've had, um, um, uh, a couple of the, uh, legislative aides participate. Uh, very excited about it. We, we've also met with ARC staff. They're looking forward to this application. Very excited about it. We, we've also met with A R C staff. They're looking forward to this application. And yeah, so I'm open up to any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Manager Roberts. Board of Commissioners, any questions regarding this C DAP application? Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so thank you, Manager Roberts and Allison, if you want to get prepared. So, small area. So somebody give me some history. We've done small area. Lithia Springs obviously covers primarily District Two, but obviously it overlays District One. We did a small, so distinguish this study from the ones that we did regarding, you know, it's sort of the tad, the corridor. I mean, there's a lot of studies going on right now. And I support studies, I get it, because you got to know where you're going. So, but clarify, distinguish the difference of what this is versus those prior two studies in Lithia Springs, because it all begins to blend together at some point.
Sure. Allison, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think that we are calling it a small area study because it's part of a larger effort that the Planning and Zoning is working on to introduce some character area work in the comprehensive plan. And so we are looking at this area around Lithia Springs to primarily look at where the land use patterns have and haven't worked out based on what's our, what is currently in our comprehensive plan. We have a draft plan that is going to be on the website this week, in addition to all of the PowerPoint presentations and meeting summaries that we've already shared in regard to this project. And just as a reminder, we're doing some larger work, such as the corridor management plan along the South Douglas scenic byway. That's also kind of all driving towards this same project, which is to be ready to introduce some better character area planning and policy work for the update of the comprehensive plan, which we anticipate starting to think about in the next year.
I got you. So, so somewhere in, in, in Lithia Springs, you're going to read, is that areas that have, like, are up or what? Blighted areas, areas that need to be redeveloped? I mean, things that you said didn't work out, they're stagnant? I mean, what are you saying? What, what does this do? Or, or how, I mean, yeah, so.
Yes, I would say all of the above. I think you hit the nail on the head with that. I think that this is a special area of Douglas County. I understand that there was some citizen stakeholders that had approached some of the commissioners and said, you know, since the area basically unincorporated and went back into the county, they feel that they would like, you know, to have a conversation about kind of their vision. And looking at the land use plan, specifically in the comprehensive plan, we've talked through some areas where I think the vision that was put in place, quite frankly, many years ago, now maybe the land use hasn't transitioned to make that viable. So specifically, there was some commercial and commerce center designations that I think we probably should revisit. And that's one of the recommendations that we have put, you know, in our draft plan, which will be available later this week. I think there's some potential larger connections to the, to the surrounding community. So as a part of this, we've identified kind of the historic Lithia Springs core, as well as kind of an area that we're just, as a placeholder, calling kind of the greater Lithia Springs community. And so I think examining those connections and where we can kind of tighten up our planning work and then translate that into kind of zoning and other policy work that we would use as we work with the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Commissioners on future zoning applications, grant applications and things of that nature.
All right, so I, thank you, Allison. That was, that was good. So you're looking at the historical Lithia Springs, right? A charter had once been out there where they were incorporated, they let it sit. So at least, Madam Chair, you won't have to worry about this Lithia Springs coming back as a city. So it sounds like that there, you're now taking what their vision may have been, that might have been dormant, Allison, and you're bringing it forth and just revisiting things, becoming more crystal clear. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at our blog postings. So we've been tracking this project through a blog on the Douglas County website, where we've tried to do our best to identify all of those historic patterns, you know, that have influenced what's basically on the ground today and why they have or have not worked as well together over time. And to the point that Ron had made earlier about the application, based on the feedback from the Steering Committee, what we're looking to do is to, to have some research done by the Atlantic Regional Commission and their partners to show us best practices from around the region of the types of things that we're proposing in the implementation plan that the community has asked to maybe see in their community. So that's things like branding and signage, kind of better gateways, maybe looking at how they can support merchants association and, and things like that, you know, to say, well, what communities have done it well and how did they do it? So that we have kind of a good playbook as we go forward for how we can introduce some of these elements into Lithia Springs.
All right, so let me now, I'll yield the lesson. So it sounds like Lithia Springs specifically is like, but while we're, we're no longer a city, we're unincorporated, we still have a character area. We still, remember, it wasn't dissolved. We know it wasn't dissolved per se, it just, it lapsed. So, but it sounds like the citizens, the stakeholders, they're still, I won't call it a township, but it still has its own character. And obviously Lithia Springs Senior Center, I mean, Lithia Springs, I mean, people know Lithia Springs. So I, I get it. I, I like where you guys are. I appreciate the focus here. And I think it warrants it. I just need to hear, as long as the citizens are engaged in this, and this is just not an exercise of, you know, if the citizens are engaged, I'm, I'm fine. So with that being said, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm fine with it as is. Keep going. Let me let it, let it go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Vice Chairman, any other questions or comments from the board before I move to the next item? Thank you so much, Ron and Allison. We're going to move to tab. Okay, we're going to move on to tab number nineteen. Tab number nineteen is authorization to write off tax interest for Coal River Land accounting the amount of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Tax Commissioner Baker, are you on the line?
I am. How are you today, everyone?
Fine, and you?
This is, this is, go ahead.
You have the floor.
This is something I brought to you guys back in December, where they were asking us to write off that twenty-nine hundred dollars. This is a company that we chased down for about four months, trying to collect our money from them. They owed us approximately two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, which they evaded us for about four months. When we went out there, they claimed they, their business wasn't there. They had an offices in Atlanta. We went up there, they evaded us in Atlanta. And finally, we decided to put a sign in their yard that said, we're going to do a tax sale on the property and lock them out on a Friday. And all of a sudden, they called us, wanted to make arrangements to make the payment. We gave them till Friday. And that Friday, they came down and they did pay the two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. However, they still owe interest and penalties, which we rolled that interest and penalties over. We got to remember, they owed this for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. On the thirty-four thousand, we rolled it over into the two thousand eighteen taxes, so that they would still owe us money on two thousand and eighteen. On the two thousand eighteen bill, we sent them a letter that they needed to get that payment in, which they did, but again, they shorted us. So they sent us a check for thirty-one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Shorten us, shorten us by that two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. They asked us to forgive that, which was interest. And I said, we couldn't forgive that, we needed that payment in. They asked that I bring it to the Board of Commissioners to ask you to forgive it. And so that's why it's before you now. Now, the one thing I want to say why I did not forgive it, that's too much for me to forgive, so I have to bring it before you guys. Although you gave me authority to forgive it, I don't think that we need to forgive that amount of money. And they asked me to bring it to the Board of Commissioners. I think once we start forgiving debt, we have to be consistent. And that's what I try to do in my office. If I'm consistent, then I have to do what I do for one, I have to do for everybody. So you got to remember, if you forgive that debt, then you're going to be bombarded with a number of individuals asking you to forgive that debt too. Because once you've done it for one, you have to do it for everybody. So I'm before you to see if you want to forgive that debt. And I'll leave that decision to you guys.
Okay, thank you so much, Tax Commissioner Baker. Board of Commissioners, do you have anything you want to just comment on? Certainly, this is something we did vote on, it would be weighed on in a different setting. Any questions or comment from the board?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, okay, this, this is just in general. And I've got two parts. Tax incentive plan. I know there's what, fifteen, sixteen companies that are part of tax incentive plan that we have on the books specifically. Are they timely in payment? One, in general, and you may not have the answer. I don't know of Director Hall or David Corporate. I need to know that information. I want to know their status. But of everybody, all fifteen of those companies in a tax incentive plan and how they paid in two thousand twenty. That, that's to the side. It doesn't drive the current moment. All right. As it relates to this, and, and I, I hear the tax commissioner. I understand his constitutionality. I understand policy, I understand checks and balances. I understand. There are extenuating circumstances, but to your point, if you begin to have this, 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 this forgiveness, I guess, you know, how, how do we treat the average citizen? Right? I'm always, you know, corporations have a little bit more leverage than the average citizen. And so do we, do we sit on them and we just, we pull and we, we make them pay? Right? These on courthouse steps and I at least feel the people out there, right? Or do we? Right? So it's, it's things, I mean, this is policy. I'm not getting into. So if you ask me, my position is just like, well, we're looking for good faith. I mean, I get you paid the principal. And you just want to like, well, I'm going to pay this, I'm going to give you a best effort payment, but, you know, let this go. Well, do you do that same way for my, my citizens that are in trouble, who don't have revenues that they can drive, they have a job? And they don't have the same, I mean, I, I can separate the two. I can compartmentalize them. And so for me, District Two, I'd say where I'm at on this is that I'm, I'm not in support of the forgiveness on this one. I don't have to go long on why. I don't think there's a right or wrong. I think everybody just takes a position. But for me on this one, I'll stand with you, Tax Commissioner. I understand people can appeal up to a higher court, higher authorities. So I appreciate, we respect the process. That's why it's before, it's just the, the public is asking if he had the authority, but people can. There's always an appeal process, right? You can always appeal something up. So, uh, thank you, Tax Commissioner, for allowing us to sort of weigh in and honor the process. But for me, I'm with you. And so I'll leave it there. I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Any other questions or comments from the board regarding this matter? Tax Commissioner, I would ask for this two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-two cents, taking the same position to not waive it. However, is there a, a, a process where you could codify a plan to have this particular company maybe make arrangements, maybe for three payments divided in three months or something? If that's what I know, you are a creative tax commissioner. Is that something you're willing to do?
Oh, yes. We, we have a payment plan people can set up, regular citizens, corporation. So we have a payment plan that they can do.
Okay, sounds good. Any other comments from the board? All right, okay, okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mitchell.
No, I was just going to say that, I mean, I see Ken, looks like he's got some legal comments that I want to kind of hear from Ken. So, and if you'll kind of take, take a quick stab at this, and then I'm going to comment after Ken. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, yes, sir. First of all, I think the Commissioner, Tax Commissioner is legally correct on this one. You know, the, the, the problem that you run afoul, the reason why this didn't go through the process that y'all have laid out for the Board of Assessors weigh in and the Tax Commissioners weigh in, is because there is no error. And this is not a case where the county or the government or the taxpayer made an error and is seeking to redress an error. And as a result of that, I should, I'm reminded of the gratuitous clause that prohibits you from giving away tax funds to somebody for no basis. In fact, I will also remind you, the, the period that the Tax Commissioner has described is non-COVID era period. In other words, y'all gave some relief back because the state legislature gave y'all authority to give some relief back during the initial crisis of the COVID era, which I think was March of two thousand twenty through some date. This date is, does not include the period of time in which they've requested relief. Essentially, what they're doing is they're appealing to your emotional sense and not a legal sense in our, in our estimation. And we would ask that you follow the guidance of the Tax Commissioner. He requested this be on because he'd like to put it to bed and we would too.
Thank you so much.
So you got Ken?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, I, I, and I concur though. I mean, I, I would just know that the Tax Commissioner has always been consistent with those who have either payment plans or pay their bills or collect as he's, as he's done. So I, I would concur with the Tax Commissioner's thoughts and views on this one and take his lead on this. I, I think whether he instituted a payment plan or not, it still should be his discretion, not our discretion, being the Board of Commissioners. So whether you go back, you know, from where I stand, whether you go back and make out a payment plan, whether it's one month, two months, thirty days, sixty days or ninety days, be consistent with whatever that is that you do. That is consistent with everybody, which I know that you are. I, I know, I preach it to the choir. But be consistent, whether they're a citizen, a non-citizen, or a, 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 a commercial business of any sort. Just be consistent. But outside of that, I would, I would definitely stand where you, basically where you stand at in the whole process of this should be collected. He or she should pay their taxes and be fair across the board. So I'll yield, yield with that. Thank you. And thank you, Ken. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell, and so much, Attorney Bernard. Okay, I believe you have your margin orders, Commissioner Baker. Tax Commissioner, you, you satisfied?
I am very satisfied. And thank you, Mr. Kim.
Yeah, thank you, Tax Commissioner. Madam Chair, so it would be appropriate to vote on this tomorrow publicly so that we can put it to rest. And if the taxpayer wants to exercise its appellate rights, it can move on. But I think Tax Commissioner Baker would like a vote, so it's recorded in the minutes.
And we will. Okay. Thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. All right, well, we're going to move on to tab number twenty. Thank you so much, Tax Commissioner. We're going to move on to tab number twenty. Last but not least, authorization to approve a memorandum of agreement with Vision Twenty-One Concepts, Inc. to provide emergency financial assistance to the citizens of Douglas County to be used for mortgage payments, rent payments and utilities. Tiffany Stewart Stanley, our Director of External Affairs, you have the floor. Tiffany Stewart Stanley, are you here?
I am, and I'm talking to myself, so I apologize. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. This memorandum of agreement is in connection to the four point six million dollars that the Board of Commissioners allocated back in December for the purpose of providing emergency assistance to those affected by COVID, the COVID nineteen pandemic. This funding that we are using for this memorandum of agreement with Vision's Twenty-One Concepts is part of the community stability needs that was set aside. And the total amount was eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. This memorandum of agreement that we are seeking permission to enter into is with Vision's Twenty-One Concepts, which is a local five oh one C three organization here in Douglas County, for the purposes of administering funds to provide emergency financial assistance in the form of mortgage, rental and utility assistance. The total amount that, that's in the memorandum of agreement should, should be two hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. And I will have to get with legal to get this corrected because currently it says a different number. I'm sorry. Of that amount, eight percent will be used for administrative costs, and those costs are twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Vision's Twenty-One, they will have to provide a monthly financial audit report to the Board of Commissioners to, so they can show where, where the funds are and what the funds are being used for. And they will also have to provide a financial report at the end of the use, of using the funds. All of the funds must be expended by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. So at this time, I will turn it back over to Chairman Jones for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Stanley. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Director Stanley? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Director Stanley. We appreciate you. All right, Board of Commissioners, we, that concludes all our actual tabs this morning. But I certainly will yield, I'm going to speak with our attorney to see if there's a need to go into executive session. Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, you need it for real estate and litigation. And I will need James Worthington for the first thing and Fred Perry for the second thing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Attorney Bernard.
Can we add personnel as well? Can we do all three? Because there are some outstanding personnel.
Okay, Attorney Bernard will add personnel as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. We have a motion and a second. When I call you District, please respond accordingly. District one? District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes, somebody is rustling papers, so it's kind of hard to hear you.
Okay. District four is not here, and then Chairman, yes, we have a four unanimous vote, and the motion carries. All right, Board of Commissioners, you know how we do it. We sign off. And then, of course, Lisa, our clerk, would you please provide instructions before we sign off?
Yes, ma'am. Once you sign off, I will call everyone back into the executive session.
Thank you. And the citizens of Douglas County, the Board of Commissioners, we will return momentarily after our executive session. Thank you so much for your patience.